All right. Thank you for waiting. We officially have a public hearing that was scheduled to start at 6:30. It is now 6:41, and I'd like to open up the public hearing regarding the host community agreement with Castle Rock Industries. Please have your representatives or whoever come up and talk to us.
My wife wants to go. My lawyer.
Ah, it's a good timing to do that. It's good to meet you. My name's Mader.
Nice to meet you.
All right, just to give many people in the audience or those listening on the camera, this would be the second public hearing, and I believe the fourth or fifth meeting we have been working in meeting with Castle Rock Industries discussing their outdoor cultivation facility they're proposing off of Walnut Hill Road. At the last meeting, I believe, we had received a revised draft back from their lawyer based on items that were brought up in previous meetings. I believe, but I'll let the other members of the board also speak on this, that we believe everything we had brought up had been addressed. So this is more of a, we think we're final. We think we're good. We hadn't had any feedback from the general public from that last meeting saying that we should bring something new up. So I guess I'll, if you would like, do you have anything to say on this? Do you think more action is necessary, or do you have any other questions?
No, I was satisfied after our last meeting as long as we, you know, we had very minimal concerns last time, and I expected us to be able to go forward tonight, so I have nothing, nothing further.
And you didn't have quite the same history as Greg and I with this, but do you have any thoughts since you've been here?
That seems like it's straightforward.
Okay.
Excuse me, I can't hear him.
He said he seems like it's straightforward. Anybody in the public have any comments on this? Any thoughts, positive or negative? Any support? Any questions about what's been proposed today? Yes, Ed?
I have, I think read in previous power, because it's articles, that the fencing that surrounds this plot would not be visible from the street, and is that still okay?
Absolutely certainly. It's way back on the property. The area that's going to be fenced off will again be obscured from view by several hundred yards of trees, basically, in every direction.
It's a central piece of 125-acre plot, if I'm right, so it's, it's in the woods.
Previously, it's also stated that it would conform to whatever the planning board bylaws may come through on zoning. Understanding that was obviously generally based on the zoning bylaws that have been presented so far. The planning board did not provide any additional criteria. They had some comments on, that were brought up, but we haven't had them say, could you do a different offset or locate it in another spot? So when that didn't come up, it didn't get included in the host community agreement, so...
I would not presume to speak for the planning board, but as I've been attending your meetings regularly, I've been attending theirs as well, and I think they've been very gracious in letting me follow along with their iterations, and I believe firmly that if what they've proposed thus far is what hopefully gets passed in June, that we absolutely think we'll abide with the regulations that they're going to put in place as well.
Okay. Yes, Sam?
I'd just like to say, as a citizen, I give this business my full support. I think it's being done right, and I think, firstly, I think there's too much regulation because I'm business-focused, but I think it's a great opportunity for the town and for these folks. So, happy to see you.
Thank you. Yes?
Leslie Kelly, 491 Walnut Hill Road, Gary. I support them completely. Anymore?
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm across 240 Walnut Hill Road, directly across from Tom and Yvonne's place. I'm 100% for it. I mean, I'll be directly impacted by, you know, traffic or whatever it might be, but I'm 100% for it. I think they've done a real good job of laying out their plans, and I believe that's why there's no problems with it.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Steve Black. I've lived on Walnut Hill Road since 1969, and I agree with the whole thing. I go along with them. I don't see any problems whatsoever.
Well, thank you. One thing I'd have to, I think it was a slip-up, but on the agenda, we did not actually call out that we may vote on this. So I don't expect anything other than we're probably going to put it on another agenda to make the formal vote, so we do it by the books, the paperwork, because if somebody saw the agenda and didn't see a vote maybe taken, written on there, they may not have shown up thinking that it was the time to voice their position. We've had that come up before where I've heard that, and it was a fine line, and we didn't, so we ended up revoting it anyway, just to make sure. I'd rather not do that, but I believe each board of selectmen here has kind of verbally already voted their position, that they're in agreement, that this is a good host community agreement for the town and for Castle Rock. We've had multiple abutters and neighbors and people in the neighborhood come in and say that, based on what's proposed, they also are either supporting it or have no problem with it. So I would expect that it's just going to be a, I'll call for a vote, we'll vote, it'll be over the, at the next meeting. We may schedule a board of selectmen meeting just before, just after the DPW Commission meeting next week, and that would be down at the DPW yard on Wheelwright Road. So pay attention. If that's the case, we will be posting that on the town website like we normally do, or my town government. So the actual formal action and vote will be taken at that time. Also, I don't recall, when we make that vote, what type of paperwork do we have to have so we can present to them that they can actually submit to the state? I would just like to see if we can have that form drafted, and we can all sign as necessary.
I think we just need the...
This is different than the RMD where they, it's not the...
The CCC has a form.
I think the CCC, once you apply, will send it to us to certify that the vote was taken, but I don't think that there's anything...
You can just, you can just...
Okay.
Okay. I just want to make sure if we can, we'll have it ready for you, and the very next day, Andrew could reach out and say, "Come, pick up whatever you need."
There is one piece of language that's going to pertain to this in every community host agreement we have so far, and my concern was raised when reviewing Ms. Ryan Doley's facility. We say, we ask for a 3% of gross sales in the facility. Let's say that Castle Rock wound up having a processing plant in another town, and they ship their product from here to that processing plant, and no sales occurred, whereas our impact fee?
They have to show sales. From transfer from site to site, that's how the state is tracking where that marijuana goes, by the money.
There could be an extremely undermarked sale price to the thing. So I don't know if we should tie the 3% to the gross final sale of anything grown in town. I'm just saying, rephrasing that.
I hear what you're saying, but I think it's a state law that prevents us from doing more than that. Because it doesn't let us put a 3% on more than just the gross sales from the facility.
My concern is when they have facilities already underway, which may not have any gross sales out of town. The other one we have going, I'm concerned that that could wind up being a lateral transfer.
It has to have gross sales.
Don't know.
You cannot give it away for free in this state, even if it's to another company.
No, but if it was, if the other facility was owned by the same company, it's not really anything but taken to a different plant to process it.
I'm curious about the licensing. If the licensing is what says, even if it's the same company, it's from site to site, there has to be some process.
Obviously, the disparity...
It's a good question.
The disparity, the 3%, the value of the product, which is going to leave here intentionally wholesale, which is going to be less than a retail markup, if someone who's growing in a greenhouse, medical quality is going to be sold for smoking, that quality and that value is going to be much higher than a wholesale value. But the majority of things that are going to be grown in town, especially outdoors, I think will be exclusively sold for processing, because I don't think you can meet the standards for the smokable aspect.
Our hope is that we can meet standards for smoking.
That would be, that would be, that would be a feat, from what I understand.
I've heard the same. Our business model, though, is predicated on we can be successful as growers of cannabis for processing.
I hope you're right. That would be, that would be much better for everyone involved.
But, you know, if we can grow cannabis that passes the testing for smokable flower, all that means is the wholesale price is higher.
Right.
Because, and then the 3% share to the town would be that much higher as well.
And I understand Greg's concern, but it's more of a state-level question, because it's a loophole that municipalities, I think, the state's not going to allow us to close that loophole if it comes to...
It's just occurred to me with something like what Mr. Ryan Doley, I don't think Mr. Ryan Doley is trying to do anything fast, you're honest, but I'm just saying, he is, he's the owner of a license for other plants, other grow facilities, and the retail facilities, and he's certainly got to be looking to partner with someone to have some sort of processing, whatever that type is. We know he intends to do an extraction for the THC, and that may grow into a processing plant that makes gummies or vegetables or something else. And my concern is that, not him, but if we do this with someone else in town, if we don't do our diligence, they could wind up saying, "Well, we've, we've made all this marijuana, and we're selling it for, you know, $100,000." It may have a half-million-dollar value, but they're selling it at a discount rate to their sister company, who's going to process it for next to nothing, and they finally just pay a real fee on this sale point, whereas they're designing it to make something on each portion of the way, so...
That's why I just want to talk about this language now, since we're on the topic.
It doesn't change my feeling on the host agreement one bit. And we did discuss last week that we wanted to delay the vote for two weeks and do it by the end of the month. We did discuss it last week, not doing the vote today intentionally, just, just in case.
Okay, I couldn't recall.
Right. We could have, we could have made the provision for it, but I'm one of those that doesn't like provisions. I don't like to say, "We might do." I think we discussed last time. We'll plan on voting it next time, just in case something came up, or just in case there was a concern we wanted to address, we said we'd hit this and planned on a vote in two weeks. So I didn't anticipate a vote tonight.
Okay.
You have a vote, or you have a meeting scheduled in two weeks. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. You may have another meeting between then?
Well, one thing I was going to bring up is we, every month, we have two board of selectmen meetings and one DPW Commission meeting we meet at. So that's the first three Mondays of every month. So next week, we actually have a DPW Commission meeting, and it's not all that rare, because the three board members are generally there, we will schedule a board of selectmen meeting just before, just after that, if we have something that's just, close it up and just more administrative stuff normally is what we address during that.
Given there's no objections tonight, and overwhelming support from your neighbors tonight, I would have no objection to putting this on the agenda and voting for it and signing the agreement next week, if you generally wanted to.
Okay.
Get you going a week earlier.
So that would be the plan, the next Monday, hopefully, we'll be able to take the vote.
That would occur down at the Department of Public Works building on Wheelwright Road.
So...
Probably be there at 6:00, 6:30?
We could probably do this at 6:30 if the DPW building's open, because usually they're at 7:00.
Or we could do it here at 6:00, and just go there later. I don't know which...
Yeah, 6:00 would be hard for me. 6:00 is, 6:30 is usually the earliest I'm raising back.
Right. Obviously, I don't do so well at 6:30 sometimes, but...
I would have a quaver after the DPW meeting, because I know before...
Oh, we could do.
They have had meetings before.
All right.
Typical DPW meetings last 15 minutes. They're not extensive. It's a brief overview of what's going on. There's usually not a lot of urgent issues to discuss that are dealt with on a daily basis through the offices, so...
It'll get posted, but it's going to be Monday.
We plan on Monday.
We'll have a set time, and it'll get posted, and then you, as well as everybody else, can kind of just follow up on the posting.
We could probably even say approximately 6:15 immediately following DPW, just, I mean, 6:00, 7:15.
They start at 7:00, so...
7:15 or 6:45. But the concern is, like you said, sometimes they meet, they'll have a water board or a sewer commission right before that, so they're already tying the room up.
So, yeah, Andrew can work with Shannon and Jason, just to figure out, maybe also they have something we're not expecting on the agenda, so we should just, if they think it might take an hour for a meeting, we'll just, we'll post it accordingly.
My guess would be like 7:15, just from where it typically goes down there. It would make no sense.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time and effort you've been putting into work with the town on this, especially with the unknowns of the bylaws that are coming, so...
Clearly, did your diligence with your neighbors, which is commendable.
We appreciate it, our neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have some meeting minutes. Do we have any thoughts or comments on meeting minutes of April 1st or April 16th?
April 16th, I am willing to recommend we approve the minutes and release of them for April 16th. Is there an executive in that?
That would be a separate set of minutes.
Okay. So, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 16th.
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The meeting minutes of April 16th are approved.
The April 1st, I don't see the correction I asked for last week, so I think this long draft came back through. It was right here. Will we use the word detail, and I do want to detail this as an assigned duty, so that we can use it as a... And not pay an overtime rate.
It's just that, that correction.
Want to hand that down?
We just strike that.
It's about, it's about the third page. We'll get them out there. But just want to, that was literally the whole point of the discussion on it, so I just want to strike that.
That's because I put it, I put it...
But anyways...
I put it at the motion, that's what I did.
But it's just, yeah, I just want to clarify, just to make sure, it's, I want everyone to understand it, without having to figure out how a conflict's within the motion and the sentiment. We'll get it. We'll get it next week or week after. Thank you.
It's not a, I just noticed, do you think when we start doing meeting minutes, we can start putting page numbers on the bottom?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next time, then, we can just say, "Go to page four."
Necessity is the mother of all invention.
It's one of those things that come up when you go back and say, "Oh, that would have been nice." And then you forget about it, and then it comes up again, and it's like, "That would have been nice."
Well, I did that, too. I had a question in the war, and I said, "It was about 10 pages in on..." And you just have, I circled it, made a note, so you'll find it, but it was...
Exactly.
But it was, yeah.
All right. So what I would like to do, just because of my estimate of the amount of time and the people that are in the room, is jump to the age-friendly communities, charge for that committee, and then we'll go to the library.
With a formal complaint, I can read this, I can't read that, unless I've read the glasses.
I have a situation to get printed out.
I'm getting them like crap. I'm trying to avoid reading glasses on camera, you know?
Yeah.
Basically, it's that old. Shows my age. I hide it pretty well, otherwise.
I was going to, doctors are moving at 3:00, rushing on traffic, getting printed like our ears back.
I was still at a roof work, I'm like, crap, I got to leave. I wanted to finish up, I got to leave, I'm already pushing it, you know? Run out of ground. So the softens are open.
I would, should I take a look, given we're the...
I'll get through more of this.
Age-friendly, dementia-friendly, we're at this position.
What can, is this a continuation of this, or is it...
No, that's just the...
Just the marijuana?
It's, no, it's the, our local, I tried to print it off of the comments.
Oh, okay.
Marijuana Advisory Committee, so that way, if you guys want to make changes, you can take it into consideration in the comments.
All right. So, Eileen?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind taking a moment and just explaining to us, as well as those listening, what the general concept of this charge is about and this, this committee is about.
Sure. It is spearheaded by the governor. He is looking to make Massachusetts age-friendly, age and dementia-friendly. So it's his initiative. It started a few years ago, and what it is, the concept is to make your community more aware of ages and dementia. So, for example, what that means is educating your, your community, your business owners, the bank, the post office, educating all those people on how to deal with somebody, say, who has dementia, how to talk to them, how to make it so that they don't feel like they're being, you know, looked at as somebody that has a cognitive issue, and making them engage, you know, so that it's, making it so that it's more, folks have more understanding of what dementia is.
Okay.
And then the age-friendly, it's very similar. There's different, there's different, what do I want to do, what do I want to say? There's different pieces of it that go together. For example, this is age-friendly. There's five categories that you have to, you know, couple maybe from each category. So this is just some of the booklets that they have. So there's economic development, there's housing, there's community listening, transportation, health services, and community supports. So all of those, you take something from each one of those categories, and you work on it and try to achieve something. So, for example, say you wanted to put in sidewalks going all the way up, you know, Pleasant Street. So that's something you could look at and say, "Okay, that's how we want to do some economic development in our community."
Okay.
So there's also things that you can do, there's a lot of grants that are available once you become age and dementia, age and dementia-friendly, that will help to do some of those tasks. So you have tasks that you have to do. There's an application through AARP that you have to submit, and then I have, I just kind of did like a brief outline of what you need to do for this, and...
Thank you.
So you have your initial meeting. So you bring in all different kinds of community members, come up with a plan, engage, analyze, figure out what you want to do. So what kind of projects do you want to do? How do you educate the community on that? What does it mean to the community? You have different, what is the greatest needs in the community? So are there, you know, is it more that we need maybe a social day program, or do we need to have more recreational activities for the kids? So it really is looking at all that as a whole and in the community, and trying to determine what is the best fit for the community.
Okay.
So those, I also have just some stakeholders there. Awareness, making folks, like I said, aware, encourage, and promote community of all ages, making an assessment. You have a three-action plan that you do, and implementing the plan, and including a lot of, you know, your first responders, training your first responders on how to treat somebody that has dementia, if you can remember. And then those eight domains in livable communities, which is the AARP, livable communities, is eight different aspects of that.
Okay.
Dementia-friendly, again, you have, you have transportation, you could use the library, educating folks in the retail services, the bank, the pharmacy, all of those could come to the table and sit and discuss how to best make that community age and dementia-friendly. So there is, there's a lot of tools out there. I have some of them here, and I showed you some. The Mass Councils on Aging has a person that is designated to assist with the dementia-friendly. AARP has a lot of different tools as well that will help with that. So your action plan for this should include, for example, the demographics of your community. So there's a lot of pieces that you want to have in there.
Okay.
And again, that will, is in the application, so it's, and you don't want to have a huge plan, a huge group, so somebody from retail, somebody from, you know, a grocery store, or somebody from the pharmacy, a bank person, a lawyer, one of you folks, an elder that has dementia, and then somebody that deals with the, you know, younger aspect. So those are what it is, basically, is what you're looking at. It is a little bit of work, and it's a collaborative effort. It's to put Barry on the map, because right now, central Massachusetts in this area has nobody that is age and dementia-friendly. So if you could be the first to put Barry on the map, that would be great.
Great. All right, good. I appreciate that. And looking at the charge, I appreciate that it's, in a way, it's broad, because you have so many other resources that break down the details of everything you're doing.
Yes, yes.
I believe you guys have presented, a couple months ago?
Yeah.
The whole task checklist book, or whatever you brought up?
Yes.
So that's when we all looked at it, and went, "Okay, this requires many people."
Yes, it does.
But that's the question. Now, once you, my thought, maybe I'm wrong, Andrew, but because this is a charge from the board of selectmen creating a committee, what we don't have on here is an actual number of people that will be on the committee, and that defines a quorum, because it is requiring open meeting laws, so you need to be able to know how many people can meet together. And because it's going to be very task-oriented, I would suggest you want this group to be probably at least nine, so four people can work together, and it's not called, you know, you're going around the open meeting, because you're going to have a lot of that, almost like subcommittee work, where, you know, one person grabbing the data, one person grabbing the roadmaps, and one person, and then the three of them or four of them come together and say, "How does this work?"
Right.
And then you come to your meeting as a group, all nine of you, or whatever, and then you take your different subgroups. So it's a big task.
Yes.
So I'm just curious what the recommendation is you might have, or how many people we think we should define in this as the committee. Now, you'll have, if things go well and we get a lot of help from the community, you'll have a lot more than the people that are actually on the committee participating. It's just, by law, we have to kind of identify numbers and names for that reason.
I would suggest probably nine.
Yeah.
And one further comment on the nine, where I'm thinking maybe 11. You have a lot of demographics and groups where you'd like to draw a pool from. When you have 11, you'd need six for a quorum to have a meeting, but that gives you a little larger group. You get up to, up to five in a subcommittee working on something without breaking open meeting laws, and that's the other thing to think. If you're going to have groups or details or gatherings when you do things together, you've got to limit that to a less than quorum number to keep open meeting laws. So 11 gives you a little more room there, but it also means you need these six to make a quorum, but I don't think you'd have a problem hitting six at a quorum, and I don't think you'd have a problem finding 11 members, so I would suggest maybe, that was my first question, too, was how many? And that's...
Yeah.
And that's up to you. If, if you think nine's better, it makes a quorum of five, it's easy to make sure you have a quorum of a meeting night, but it keeps you a little low in your numbers if you're doing a group effort on something, whether it's gathering signatures. I mean, let's say you're going to go out and, and you, you have something, you're getting signatures for a petition somewhere. You've got to limit how many people can get meet to do that unless you have an official meeting before it and then disseminate. You'd have to have an official meeting and minutes and recorded publicly. Or you could have five people, 11, they're going to meet and go do that and make their plan and go. And they can all have, health is involved here, but only, only, when you say quorum, it's committee members. Official committee members is your limitation, so that's something to consider. We'll consider, I think, whatever you ask for a number, but that's going to be something to consider as the number goes bigger and gives you larger subcommittees. If the number goes smaller, it's easier to have a quorum for your meetings.
Right, the actual, that quorum ends up being the thing that actually allows you to make an official action.
Right.
So there is a difference of, let's make it a 15-member one and now you can never get your eight people minimum, you know, it...
Unless you have really dedicated members that, that have a true interest in it, then, and that's, you'll have to judge it yourself too, who you get involved if they're going to make their meetings and if they, if they sit and agree on a date, you'd hope they'd make it. That's the challenge is whenever we do a committee, whenever we talk about committee size, it's, it's no joke. You know, apparently our last committee, they, they met in full force without a problem and put a lot of time in and that was a very good committee. We were very fortunate on that one. And hopefully we'll be on this. But I had other questions in general, if I could. Can you give us a brief description of what dementia actually is?
Dementia is cognitive impairment. So the brain starts to deteriorate and folks forget theirs. So it could be, um, short-term memory loss, um, where folks can't remember yesterday. It could be long-term memory loss where they can't remember when they were younger or a child or during their teen years, they can remember like a specific era of their life, but, um, they forget. So it's, it's basically folks that forget, um, and struggle with it.
Similar to Alzheimer's, it sounds like there, but isn't there an aspect of confusing events and hallucinating and things like that as well to dementia? Is that, am I off on that?
Um, it, it really depends on the type of dementia. So there's like, I think, eight or nine different types of dementia in Alzheimer's. So it really depends on that.
And so I just want to, just define it differently than Alzheimer's because that description makes it sound just like Alzheimer's.
Alzheimer's is when...
Which affects still a lot of people as well.
Alzheimer's, um, affects the brain more severely. So they're usually die from a complication from Alzheimer's and, um, they, they also have it where, when they become, they got at a certain point, they no longer can eat or drink, where dementia, sometimes it stops at a certain point, um, where they no longer, you know, where they still remember things. But dementia, they, they slowly will stop talking, stop eating. So really is this difference.
See, because the, at first look, you say dementia and just aging, why did they both those two things together? My suspicion is, and then my next question is, how common is the occurrence of dementia? 10% of the time, 20% of me, I, I assume it's a relatively high rate of occurrence if people are afflicted with dementia.
I don't know the exact number, but it, yeah, it can be up there.
To, to see them tie it together with the general, with, um, age-friendly and dementia-friendly, to see them tie the two together is, it seems like a strange pairing, like, ah, this dementia with everyone's old, why, it's a serious pairing because it's a serious problem.
And it's also to educate kids on how to talk to somebody with dementia.
Everyone, we won't just say cancer.
A lot of, a lot of children don't know how to react to, like a grandparent that may ask them something and then they ask it again. You know, the grandparent asks it again, they don't know how to react. So this will also help kids learn how to react and how to talk to their grandparent if they have dementia.
I'm fortunate to have known three of my great-grandparents very well. And I have a granddaughter who has great-grandparents that she'll know well. So my family has longevity and I have a lot of experience. What happens is people will age more than, than I think a lot of people do. And I, I think there's a lot of people will be, um, surprised to learn things about it, so it's a great idea.
So I, does anybody else have any questions?
Do you have anything, Bill, that you'd like to...
Is the age slash dementia friendly, is the, is the age part more of a physical deterioration as opposed to dementia being the...
No, the age means the whole, the community as a whole. So it's from infancy to a senior. So it's the whole broad spread in the folks in the community. So you're teaching younger kids, again, you know, maybe making a bike trail for them, that's where you're running into the age. So making a bike trail for kids, something recreational for the children, um, that's where the age part comes in.
Okay, so...
Or walking path or...
The age is more just about getting the different ages to relate to each other?
Yes.
Understanding their perspective of whatever, life, community?
Right.
So kids now better understand elderly?
Yes.
And they understand those middle people that still have no grounding and they're just doing whatever they want?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the term park means something...
Thanks for getting that.
If you say park, kids are thinking of a playground and people in their 30s and 40s might think a nice place to sit and walk the dog and, you know, seniors might think of a place to play checkers or just get out and have some fresh air and watch the birds. But I mean, it means something different to everybody and that's, that's the overlapping, I think. And they can all be used in the same place, just a matter of making sure it's set up to do that as well, part of the funding.
Age-friendly.
Making sure that they can be used for everyone, not just one. It's a really good idea.
Right. So I guess the only recommendation that it sounds like we're really coming to revise this is just to identify the number, which therefore identifies the quorum. You brought up a couple of thoughts.
At least an office and chairman, and we should say, and... We could just add to the first line, the election of office and chairman.
Yeah, or they could just add another number. I'm okay however you feel to format it, but, um...
Bump them all down and say group or whatever.
Do you, do you want to think about it more?
11, 11, should we bump 11? Yeah, because I mean, at minimum we want five. If we, if we get five people, we can get, get started with 11.
Right. Okay. No, you can't, you need six.
Sorry, six.
No, I'm just...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you just dawned on me like, wait, that wasn't quite...
Bump all these, bump all these two, three, nine and say 11 will be, you know, the formation of a committee with up to 11 members. And six shall be a quorum.
Got it.
So bump all the numbers by one digit, add a new one.
I would make a motion that with the inclusion of that, unless anybody has any other questions, we would accept this charge.
Mm-hmm. We can sign it once it's amended.
And then they can move forward with advertising for people to actually be on the committee, make the official advertisement so that tonight they can just start all that action. Is that...
Should we come back and sign it just to make sure we...
I can have it for next Monday.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll sign it at the DPW Commission.
Sure. I make a motion to approve this charge with the amendment that all the numbers are bumped by one increment. We add a new line one, which stipulates 11 for the member size and six for quorum. I second that.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for taking the time.
We should have it ready next week.
And, uh, kind of for moving this forward, it'd be nice. All right, the next big one on the agenda, well, there could be a lot of big ones. But we're going to go with the Barry Library Association, which is technically a private organization that the town's been working with for a long time. And we're just trying to put it on paper a little bit more.
We started this crap. Simple little question about the little things, you know?
Sorry.
But it had to be done. I think it was the right thing to do. I wish I could read it better.
It also includes the Board of Trustees too.
Yes.
As a third party or as part of the BLA?
As a third party.
Lester's representing trustees.
The trustees are the elected board? The BLA is just the private organization that determines their own organization? In other words, okay, thank you.
So it was most, so it was a very unique agreement that you had to have three parties all sit at the table and agree to, to, to one thing. But basically rather than reinvent the wheel, we sat down and wrote out what the current means of operating, uh, means of operations are. And I think that we really came to a good consensus that really outlined that without, um, without changing anything. So, uh, I don't know, if you guys had a chance to read through it, if you had any questions, um, that any of the members of any of the three boards could, could answer for you.
I have some questions.
This was a long time in the making, by the way.
It's not an easy thing to...
It's not, and that's why the parties agreed.
That's, that's what the holdup was, we talked about a roof and putting town fender in, I was kind of like, we, we, we need some definition of what's going on before we just throw money out someplace that we have no say, no claim to. Not that I'm against us supporting the library money, but we've, we've got to do our diligence and this is probably long overdue, that this has been done.
A document like this also allows us to be able to go and apply for grants from either party.
It's long overdue.
Right, because you can show the relationship.
This is, I'm glad you've all taken the time to get through this and I know it was, um, not what you expected. We simply talked about fixing the roof, but, um, I think it's necessary and I'm glad to see it's come through this way.
It's definitely more than the roof because, you know...
Oh, I understand that, but...
It's how we all work together.
Now that it's here, we can also address more issues as we go, which we, hard, I mean, you, we could, but I think it's irresponsible for us to just blindly fix things and do things there in behalf of the library without the town having a say or vested interest in it.
Well, I think that's why we needed the agreement first, which is sort of putting things in writing.
That's, that's kind of why I held you all up before. I was hoping to see something along this line, so.
Okay. I get a few comments, I'll go through with the first and, um, item two on page two is the occupancy fee. The wording itself, I'm generally okay with, but I'm wondering if we want to put in there something that truly defines the separation from the, uh, general operating expenses versus capital such as, is it something over a thousand dollars? Is it something over 5,000? At what point is what's considered the town's responsibility? You know, so if you've got a $5,000 AC unit go, that's a capital thing. But it can be reviewed as a maintenance. So at what point do we identify what's operating versus, um, capital? And I don't know if it's, it's a dollar number, I...
Often times we're working with the town accountant to determine what those standards are and working with the town administrator to find that out. And so depending on what project comes before us, depends on which funds we're using and how the BLA works with the library to give funds or if we have some gift funds or grant funds. And so each project is different and...
But I guess what I'm trying to get at is painting a wall because a wall needs to be painted because it's been chipped and patched.
I wouldn't consider that a capital.
Nothing.
No.
But painting an entire room may all of a sudden put you into a 5, $10,000 job where you're moving furniture, doing the walls. And so that's what I mean, it's even the same type of description of work goes from maintenance to capital depending on that, that level of cost.
I thought there was a limit.
It's a contractual agreement, it has nothing to do with the law.
Right, so 10,000...
So this is us saying, at what point can you come to us and say, but that's maintenance? And we're saying, yeah, but it's going to cost us $40,000. And you're saying, but you signed the agreement, we owe the 40,000. We've got to put a monetary cap on how you can come back to us and say, well, you owe it. It fits a maintenance description.
The thing is though, and the, and the agreement says that the town's responsible for both the cost of operating and, uh, of operating and maintaining the premises.
Without implied limitation.
I don't think that it was set in there to say that, oh, and that town would work with the BLA to appropriate, uh, appropriate funding when needed for large-scale capital repairs. So I don't think it was made to just say that if it's under a certain amount, the town, it would be the town, or it'd be the BLA's responsibility or it's over a certain amount. I think it was more of that the town is, um, generally responsible for all, but would work with the BLA.
We're not responsible for any capital, so even the roof would be a negotiated...
The, the limitations already exist in the fact that on the town's aspect for the library, we have a yearly operating budget. And if I'm able to do a capital project within that budget and the trustees are approving it, then we do it. If not, and the BLA can't cover it and then it's not in my yearly budget, we would come before the finance committee and before this board and say, this is something that's going on. We're looking for grant funds here, this is a large capital project, how are we going to move forward together? It brings all three parties to the table to discuss what the long-term planning is for those projects. So the nature of the agreement is to just call forth everybody's role. And I think if you get really strict into the cap and the money and looking at that, it's going to put a damper on what the spirit of this document is because those caps already exist in our check and balance system of the finance committee and company.
They exist under the current good relationship. But this is going to 2050. There'll be different people in different places that can look at this contract later and say, you know what? I don't consider that capital. And try to push the cost across it. And so I'm saying just, again, I admittedly have not been involved in this relationship between the three parties very much. Outside of a big high level, go to a finance committee meeting and learn about the budgeting. I don't really get involved with the Board of Trustees or the Library Association and how you work with us and we all kind of make this work. So I'm not trying to, please don't take anything I say at all about it is or isn't working because that's not what it's about. I'm really taking a very devil's advocate view of a contract that the town is going to execute. And so for me, when I look at this, I think it's only appropriate to put in that cap, but you can also follow with the caveat of, unless all three parties agree. And then it just allows you to just sit at the table again, like we've always been doing. But it doesn't give one side the power to say, but that's it. Because what happens if in nine months of the fiscal year, you ate up your operating budget on things that could have been pushing capital costs and then you come to us with something and you have no money left? But this is something that has to be done and now it's the town's responsibility. And this has nothing to do with would have been your intent. It's just we get there and now all of a sudden, especially if we don't have Kate or Lester or very similar members of these boards and it can disrupt that, actually it can disrupt the relationship as much as just putting it in here. So that's why I'm suggesting maybe you think $5,000 is an appropriate thing that says, that just needs to be talked about. And I, I'm okay with how you want to word it, but it's...
I think, I think that's a great idea. I think that I would trust Andrew's judgment about this as, as to what the right dollar amount is.
I think, I think 5,000 would be inappropriate.
I mean, in Worcester, anything over a thousand dollars with the DCU becomes capital and SMG is not responsible for managing it. But they provide, you know, a huge capital project budget every year and they generally get their money. I'm not saying they get all of it, but there are certain caveats that it's in there because you never know if that relationship's going to change. And so you got to put it in there and then just work with it. And that's why I'm thinking you got to be careful with how much you consider. And now when I'm talking about that, it's, it's an individual project or an individual piece of equipment or something that has to go over that number. It's not, I mean, it's pretty obvious if it's capital when you're going to reseal and stripe the entire parking lot. But a lot of people would also want to say, but that's just maintenance because we're not replacing it. But that cost is now, could be $10,000 to do that whole parking lot to reseal it and stripe it?
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm just saying that would just be something where we'd want to talk about it, not necessarily be told, that's our job.
Absolutely, and I think that our, our whole understanding here was that we wanted to set up a situation where we could work together about it.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem if you have a number that you think is a reasonable number to put in here. I really don't. I think that's, I think that's a reasonable request.
Would you think a thousand or would you think 5,000?
I think a thousand is too, too low. I mean, the BLA can certainly, you know, contribute, that's the whole point.
Before we get too far with this discussion, I'm going to throw another wrench in this. The Barry Li- Library Association is the owner of the building.
Right.
Our town funds at town meeting are put in... Our town funds at town meeting are put in control of the trustees.
No. In control is Stephanie who answers to the trustees.
No.
In the trustees, I work for the trustees.
You sign off, right, on the invoices, not the trustees, when it comes to the accountant?
The two trustees sign.
So she just pays?
I went down, falsely correct.
She just do payroll? I don't recall seeing trustees sign every...
There are two trustees who sign every one.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting me. I apologize for coming back as if I knew something.
I'll begin again.
I've got to admit, I was wrong, so I'm sorry.
So the town appropriates money at town meeting, which we put in control of the trustees. The trustees are our literal trustees who will use the funds, who are entrusted with those funds by the town of Barry. This states that we will, we, not the trustees, will work with the Barry Library Association and the association alone will determine how those funds are spent. I have a problem...
Are you in number two on the CFEs though?
Number two, the last line, the Barry Library Association may expend the funds in capital repairs as they see fit. How do these funds get to them? They're in the trustees' hands. How do they get the right from our townspeople to spend our town's money as they see fit? And this is where the conflicts start in the first place.
So I think that's just a misword because I think it was meant to be that they may expend their own funds as they see fit.
Right, I agree with you, that was not intended.
Their funds should have nothing to do with this agreement.
Right.
No, what they're saying here is, I think what this implies is...
If they get grant money, it's theirs.
No, what they're saying is, no matter what the town does with that building, if the BLA comes up with money and says, I want to do it, I can spend my own money and do it. In other words, you have no voice on what I can do if I choose to.
And that's my consent.
And I think that's what that last sentence is just saying. No, further down, it speaks about their right to make any alterations without our consent. This is speaking to the money. So there's different clauses that speak to both sides of that.
The Barry Library Association may expend its own funds on capital as it sees fit.
Okay, no, I saw you were saying there was something else to...
Yeah, that was just...
After that.
Just expend their own funds as they see fit. Because the way this sort of reads with what comes, with what it's following, we're talking about town funds and what we pay for. And then we go right into them spending money. So we need to define that that's not the town money. That's my only caveat to that, in addition to the spending caps. And I think, yeah, a thousand is a low spending cap.
We fixed the heating system and it was like $500 to do the cleaning.
Nowadays, that's routine. I typically see 5,000 as a cap which I'm comfortable with.
And I'll, yeah, that was just a starting line. I'm okay if Andrew and you guys come back and say...
I deal with the other side of this all the time. And if someone put me in a thousand dollar cap, there's not a single project I would do for that town. Without them going through a whole meeting and procurement process and it's a pain. So then they have a 5,000 cap. It lets them get a lot more stuff done. It's just, a thousand dollars nowadays doesn't buy them anything.
Okay, so 5,000 cap, I think the number all.
Mr. Chairman, just to address one other point, where it says the town would work. In this case, the town means both this board and the board of trustees.
Sure, okay. So for us, we just need to define the first paragraph of the entire agreement that says...
Generally, then we should add that language because generally the town refers to the select and the administrative staff in the town.
So I have trustees.
I would have the trustees, the town in the designated library trustees. Because, or you can say specifically the select board of trustees. The town actually could imply the body of the town at a meeting.
Once this agreement is signed, it will fall to the trustees to enforce it.
Right, the town could literally be interpreted as the town meeting town.
I follow what you're saying.
So I would define it, clean it up, take away questions later. Anything we can need enough now, so I'd say that the board of selectmen and trustees shall work together to find funding for projects. And the board of trustees, she'll include the library, she'll include Stephanie in what we need for that and Andrew in our offices, but that would define it clearly.
But just so you know, that was our intention, let's do agree with what you're saying.
But once again, it's just little language cleanups, this is very, so far, very inclusive and clear. And this is why we go through all of our documents the same way. We'll still find more stuff and someone in the audience will say, well, that, you've got a typo here. And it's going to happen too. Someone's going to miss a typo or spelling or punctuation and...
Moving on...
But they're irrelevant, I mean punctuation changes.
Yes, Claire, member of the finance committee. Yes, Claire.
And this is what we want to know. Because it's been wondered, I know, by the finance committee board. What exactly does the trustees do? What exactly does the BLA do and where do they get their funds? Now I know Stephanie handles what we, the budget, which we work with. But we have no idea about the other.
The definitions are on the first page here, so at least, because I just read that myself.
And I've been wanting to know for quite a while.
That will lead to your question and we can later post this so other people can read it, but that gives that little definition of what they are. Basically, the Barry Library, Barry Association is the owner of the facility of the building and the town occupies it. And the trustees are the ones that sign the checks and approve the funds that Stephanie wants to do with the library.
And they're in charge of policy for the library.
So they basically are the managers of the library, so to speak, as far as the funds, policies. Personnel goes through Stephanie, but probably proof through them before that comes to us as well. But they define there anyways, because I was curious with the relation. So basically, the association owns it. And the town uses it. And the trustees manage it.
The association is doing the fundraising through different projects that they have and they have their own funds that it has heard.
You can kind of think of the Barry Library Association very similar to how the old Christmas and Barry Committee was. It was a private organization that created their own funds and the town contributed funds towards it for the same thing. But two separate funds came in and both are private organizations working with the town. And that's what I meant by that.
The BLA first committed to being...
It was founded in 1883, so it's chartered by the state of Massachusetts.
It existed prior to the town's involvement with the library.
Right, okay. And so we raised money, they also have their own funds that they had. But we get gifts, grants, stock, we get ready funding, which things we've just done ourselves. We have, you know, private donations for people. So we, Barry Village and community society contributed to Carton yet. So there are places like that that we get our funding from.
So it would be like the police association that's not connected with the police department?
But they support the...
And the fire association.
Right, except in this case, the association owns a building. And much like we hit, commented with the Christmas and Barry Committee, when you have a committee like this that does their own fundraising, that's funds that don't have to go through us, that don't have to be traced, that don't have to be counted for at town meeting. It's much more efficient, they're not, they're not subject to prevailing wages and other things.
No, no, that's not true. It depends on the situation because prevailing wages can still apply if it's a shared expense that's considered a building that the town has use of. It's in various descriptions.
If they're doing gardening or planting or some other things that aren't going to hit us, they can do improvements on the realm that are not tied to it, that's what I'm saying. There's things they can do without us that would keep expenses way down. Because once it goes through the town, procurement process and prevailing wages, things tend to double in price. So there's a great advantage to having the association involved.
They also are helping with programming, which is something that is a zero-funded line in the library's budget, but is so pivotal to what we do in the community. They're an important part of what we do and they're, they're strong in the tradition of what our library is and what we've become today. And I think we've all been working really well together and this document solidifies that.
It is, sorry. Moving on to another subject, not the roles of each different party and what we do. Only because I'm trying to get back to this. Is this about, Ed, I'll give you a moment because you did ask.
Okay, and I say this as if I remember the finance committee, thinking from the point of view of the town's concern for future expenditures. Is there a problem if the BLA independently decides on a capital improvement that involves further future continuing expenses, further janitorial, further maintenance, further fuel? Because I think that then becomes a concern of the local town.
That is perfect because that leads right into my next comment, so thank you. My next comment is, we do not properly or completely define the premises that you are allowing us to use. I saw one reference to, we can work with you to use Allen Hall. I found, I understood that historically, we don't use the museum part. That is still BLA, always will be. So I think we need to provide floor plans and actually mark what is under the lease or whatever we're calling this agreement that we are now, we maintain. Because if we can't use the museum, we should not be required to maintain the museum.
Well, the only thing you're maintaining is the heat.
Well, if it's not defined in here, it's the whole building and the whole parcel. So we've got to break that out. And that also then, if we break that out and you add an addition or a shed because of the benefit, we have to come back to the agreement to see if we're going to pull that shed into our maintenance responsibility. So by defining the premises more detailed, we address what Ed's saying is expansions and all that. We can just stay on top of it. It's not, it allows this to be more of a living document.
Do you want a map of the building?
How if we just added as shown in attachment A and put a map of the building?
I've got a really good map.
Right, but you may need a little description because we also want to make sure that we're clarifying the...
We can do by floor.
We do, we do have...
Floor, parking lot, drainage, I mean, what part of the entire site is...
You could have overlays.
And I'm okay how you choose to, I'm just saying we've got to do it, I'm not going to...
You could have an overlay.
I'm sorry, Lester?
I'm sorry, if you go back to section D under recitals, the first page. That's a bit more specific in terms of what...
And we could add, say, attachments and add floor. Which we do have.
And on the floor plan, if you had an overlay that would show colored sections, the town uses the blue sections and the pink sections are strictly for the BLA. Where you might have storage, you might have an office space, it's not part of this.
Right.
Very, very, very simple to have a simple overlay and sketch out. You could circle a room here and there that's going to be pink, that's not for us and everything else.
You might need to clarify number, letter D there though, because this agreement is limited to library floors while permitting use of those other floors?
Right.
At what point does use of those floors then start to create the implication of what ownership we have of maintaining it? So I'm confused, for me, I don't know law well enough to see if someone would say, that's a loophole. So I'm just saying, I just, I like the idea of adding the reference with the map. Thank you.
That's fine, and we can do that including...
I was going to say, do you think that's a more appropriate place to put it? Is there as opposed to under number four or where do you think it should go?
I actually think it would be better to create a, either use of premise or definition of premise, not necessarily in the recitals. I think the recitals are more about who are you, who am I, who is that person? And now because of that, we're coming together to do something. And then you define what that do is and how it's contained. That's me, again, a lawyer will probably come back and say I'm wrong.
And you can refer to the recitals as, you know, further defined and use of premise. You can have a bullet to just divert me. So that way they're tying it together without redundancy in the language. We don't like redundancy in language, as you've heard of many different issues.
I think I, I had two more questions. I'll get through those real quick and then we can, I'll open it up to anybody else and I'll step back. But if you go to number 12, insurance, which is about the dead center of the document.
Yeah, page five.
Oh, okay, there is page numbers up here on the top left. I'm like, I don't see any page numbers. All right, page five, second paragraph of the insurance 12, which is one sentence long. The last three words of over each party's employees. This is, I'll read the whole sentence. "The town shall maintain workers' compensation insurance as required by any applicable law or regulation in accordance with the laws of state or territory or province having jurisdiction over each party's employees." Maybe it's again, because I don't quite understand legalese, but this sounds like we're going to provide workers' compensation for the BLA.
Certainly not the intention.
No, that certainly wasn't the intention.
Because it does say each party's employees, which means you're one of the parties and you're one of the employees.
I think we should just take out...
I know it's more the reference of the jurisdiction over the employees.
But they're not employees though, the employees are the paid employees by the town.
No, the BLA may have employees.
No, we have none, we're all volunteers.
It's all no volunteer organization, as described.
Until they decide to hire people.
No.
The charter prohibits that, they can't do that.
So we could strike that and just say, the town...
You could, or the town will just maintain workers' compensation for their employees.
Their employees.
Per...
Right.
Or its employees.
Mass general law or whatever we consider is applicable. Only because...
And is that, is that even necessary? We already have workers' compensation for our employees as part of our town's charter.
That's a good question, but I do see in a lot of contracts, they do it anyway, but... I'm with you.
There's more boilerplate than anything.
What this is, is like if for some reason we skipped it and they decided they didn't like us anymore, they could say, oh, you voided the contract.
Well, again, the BLA would be voiding its charter, which is a bit more serious if they...
You'd probably get a nice endowment before you think to do that. I don't mean that in a negative, but...
We can certainly change that, no problem.
Now on page nine, number 23, recording. It says here, "The town shall not record this agreement or any memorandum or notice thereof." I'm guessing the word recording was intended, we're not going to record at the registry of deeds.
Right, yes.
But I think we need to clarify this because by contract, it means it has to be recorded with the town clerk. And it becomes a record that is a public record, so it's recorded. So we may need to clarify this because we cannot not record this somewhere.
Okay.
So we'll just say, right, with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds.
And that's fine with me.
So that's why this would be recorded?
No, it'd be recorded with the town clerk, but it wouldn't be recorded.
Wouldn't be recorded, okay.
Yeah, right. And I think I understand this. You know, recording it there means somebody's got to go and figure out how to change it if there's a force majeure and in 10 years you're like, this isn't working. We've got to go through the whole step of going through the deed. I understand that.
You could simply say, "This document shall not be recordable with the registry of deeds and holds no, no claim to the title of the property," period. And make it clear, it's just making clear that we have no entitlement to the deed of this property and the title to the property, so. So no, no record of this agreement shall be attached to the deed or title of this property. It should be clearer. So no, no recording shall attach the title or deed.
Good point.
That sound better? Make you feel safer?
I don't know well enough about that, so that's why to me it's just, I didn't want it to be too generic because we would be immediately voiding the contract once we signed it. Because we'd give it to the town court and record it.
But if the concern is that we're attaching this to the title, making this forever document to the title of deed, you specifically say that it won't be attached to the title of deed.
So you set that right.
And that, that keeps it out of the registry.
Great, thank you.
And you can double check that with attorneys to make sure I'm correct on it. I've been mistaken before.
Other than that, I mean, I really had nothing more. I think it's a good agreement. I think it just, again, helps define the borders and this is the area we'll work together within. Consistently, we've tried to do what we needed to to make sure you got your 2% so the grant stayed in place. I understand annual broke my first year I learned that.
Yes, I did.
As a selectman, yes.
And we appreciate that, to have our certification, it's so important.
It makes a huge difference and the more I learn about how the, even just the sharing of the library resources is all a part of that, I didn't, that was pretty interesting to learn.
We need to be clear of the threshold, that we need to meet with that every year so we don't get, like we were two years ago, disallowing it by mistake until we made the adjustment. Understanding what it's for is pretty important.
We really appreciate the board's support of the library. It really helps me do it.
It goes a long way. The library is a resource that...
It's part of the community.
It's very hard to say the importance of the library in a town. You know, it's hard to put the right words because everybody has so many different reasons why it's important to them, that you can't do it in just a few words. Because someone's going to be like, yeah, but I like it for this, and I like it for that. And someone might just say, oh, it's a pretty building.
It's a good problem.
But it still matters, right. And I know in this town too, we've got a lot of homes that don't have good access to computers. Our library is now a nice resource for computers. So that's very valuable in my mind. Dylan, do you have any other questions on this yourself?
I have no questions on this.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I also love the library.
There you go.
I love being able to print documents for 20 cents a page.
Yes.
That's very handy.
Any more comments, any thoughts?
I haven't finished reading it all yet, but so far, no.
What's the next steps in this process?
Make these updates if you guys can be, maybe one more time just us to make sure that these are all in there and then bring it back to you guys to make sure you're all set.
So does that mean we come back and we discuss it again, or you're just bringing back the corrections?
If you guys get to the drafts you agree on, I would just say, don't wait on us if you happen to have your own library trustees meeting lined up, put it on your agenda, you work your, you know, don't wait for one due at first.
Right.
No, we are.
Because I think there's a minor, I don't think.
In terms of the protocol, this board signs the contract and it comes to the trustees, so there's no timeline for that. Obviously, the sooner the better, but you can certainly wait until your concerns have been addressed.
I guess the only thing is, do you consider this, the Board of Selectmen signing the contract? If so, then what we might want to do is change the Board of Library Trustees to say, recommended by Board of Library Trustees.
The trustees are a signatory, but after you, the protocol is that you negotiate contracts and it's a three-way contract. So you sign the contract first, we sign it as the people who are going to be responsible for enforcing it. The association.
Not a big deal, it's just words.
It would require all signatures to be valid.
Yes.
So hopefully the next selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, we'll work to try to get it to you guys before.
Great.
Do you see the need for us to come back before you or make the changes?
Well, technically, I would actually like to know that you guys have approved it before it comes to us because you will be managing it after that. You know, I would like to know, in other words, it's your recommendation for us to sign it, and then we would be the last signatory.
We are meeting Wednesday night, this Wednesday night.
So we could probably get the corrections made, present it to the board Wednesday.
We will not sign it, we'll recommend to you, and then after you've signed it.
Send a letter. I don't know why that makes a difference, it's all the same to me. That's why I said you shouldn't be signing it because you're not signing it on behalf of the town anyway. Change the signature page, say, as recommended by the library trustees, and then we sign after you.
Yeah, we are party to it, but the town bylaw is that this is the board that negotiates contracts, so your signature is paramount on the contract. Once you have approved it, then the trustees will sign it as recognition of that approval, and then we'll enforce it.
And typically, what we do is we sign a contract last, we may approve it and everyone signs it, and then we have other signatories.
Well, here's, here's what we'll do, we'll approve it Wednesday night, and it'll come back to you, your signature, and then we'll sign it.
Okay, at some point, we have to sign it too.
Yes, between the window and the board of selectmen.
I think we should sign it before it goes back to the selectmen, actually. So we don't mean to.
Typically, this is a lot, typically, this is the last spot for document.
And this isn't holding up anything major, it's just dot the I, cross the T, and then we sign it, right? Or you need this to take another step on something that I'm not aware.
No, 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 we just want to have this in place, that's it.
This is just to put everything in place.
Okay, and that's why I'm asking, because if that's the case, we can wait till after the 20 seconds, and then it's executed, it's done, and moving into FY '20, we're.
Right, so when is town meeting?
Let me know if, reach out if somebody thinks differently. So.
No. All right, great, well.
This doesn't need to be ratified at the town meeting.
I mean, prior to this, we've just been, we're doing business as we always have done business, correct?
And we will continue to.
Yes.
You know, and then once this gets signed, I mean, it creates the box, but I'm not saying it's really changing that.
Right, this is memorialization.
So that's why I was more like, the timeline of signing this isn't, because I don't think we discuss anything.
And to your point, in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years.
It would be though, holding something up if somebody said, I'm looking to apply for a grant, and this makes a difference. And that's why I didn't know, how does it affect you if we wait another three to four weeks because of that timeline?
It makes a difference.
It won't affect us.
Okay.
We do not currently have a grant in hand that we would like to put a proposal in for, so.
Okay.
The only real question will come up to me at the annual town meeting, is this going to change the request for the budget, the line item, in other words? That's the only thing that'll make a difference. If next year, suddenly, meeting these obligations, our budget request is 20% higher, that's when we'd have a problem, that's, and I'm not judging either way, but saying if that did occur, that would create a problem. So as long as this has been done carefully enough to make sure that we are just continuing on the same manner, which was the intent, it just gives us some definition, as we requested, to have some input on what capital expenses are and where the money goes and how it's used.
Right.
So we get some input before we spend some money down there, and we have some assurance that we keep occupancy of the building. Which is, which is my only concern before we dump money into a roof. That we continue to have the right to use the facility after we do so.
Absolutely.
The only reason I said something, what, a month or two ago, when we started this conversation, is expenditure of capital without any, any assurance. Because we had none.
This finally officially formalizes that agreement.
Good intent all across, and we understand that, but putting stuff in writing is, makes everyone rested a little better.
Answer your concern, it's certainly not the trustee's intention to have this affect the budget anyway.
It wouldn't be good for anyone, that just, that makes us an issue at town meeting now, which we don't want. We want this to be smooth and
It's a totally separate.
And transparent, and now transparent and apparent to everyone what exactly the relationships are, what the Berry Library Association does, and people now understand you own the building, and they do a great deal of fundraising to, and put capital into it on their own. And I would bet we're contributing less than half of the operating expense overall for that facility. You're chuckling, it's probably an understatement.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking about how much money we put in over the past 10 years.
I know, I'm just saying, the town actually has to contribute a relatively minimal cost to keep this library going. We're very fortunate to have this established as it is. I want to thank you all for what you do.
Well.
And I'm, I'm very grateful that you've come forward with this agreement.
So I want to thank the selectmen and the town for all that you've done for the library, because this has been a wonderful experience to work with Andrew and with everybody here. I mean, it's hard to negotiate among three parties. We did it, we did it very quickly, and I want to thank the town for all that they put into the cost of, you know, keeping the library going. It's very important to me.
My observation is, the fact that the three parties came together so easily means you had a good work relationship. You had a good work in relationship to me.
Otherwise, it could have been 10 years.
Right, I mean, but that shows.
As Andrew said, this basically formalizes what we've been doing.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
That's really important, thank you for your support.
And thank you too. I really appreciate you guys working with Andrew, and like you said, you did a lot in a very short amount of time considering, so thank you.
Thank you. One more question. Oh, sorry.
Who pays for the insurance of the building?
We both pay insurance, the town pays insurance, the BLA has their own insurance. We insure the building.
There's actually wording in here that speaks about what the BLA does cover on their own. They have a separate insurance, so this speaks of.
So what insurance will we have, the town pay?
I think Maya still our insurance.
I have that in email, so you can have that packet, and everything's spelled out, because for the finance committee, she's going to want to see
Yeah.
that, it's good to give to them.
Because I was just thinking, if they own the building, they should be insured.
We do, we do insure it.
So that if, like, the flooding and that kind of stuff, your insurance.
It wasn't covered. That's God.
Yeah. Flood insurance is specific insurance, which you know now, but hopefully the new drainage is helping with that, we haven't been up there pumping in a while.
Yes.
Which we were doing a lot, which we were doing a lot before, a couple times a year.
Okay, thank you very much again. Thank you, Stephanie, much appreciated. The amount you accomplished there at the library, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, take care.
And if you have any other questions, you can call.
Okay, what I would like to do is, I need to take about a five-minute break, then we're going to jump into some of the heavier stuff. Clarification means that 8:06. May I want a bylaw review? Let's get into that one. Just as a reminder, I'd like to get into the, not as many people here now, but let's just bring all comments and questions back to the chairman to get the floor before we continue on the last couple items. We kind of got into more of a very casual conversation, and I believe we just need to kind of keep it moving, it's already 8 o'clock, and we have some hefty things in front of us, including the annual warrant items. So, starting with this, we had received, this is specific to only the general bylaw, not the planning board's zoning bylaw options, so we are just looking at what the Board of Selectmen had proposed, and in response, what our bylaw review committee proposed in response to their various meetings, and I believe it was the last meeting they brought up and presented this. My position is, with all the effort that everybody put into it, I'm willing to accept all the recommendations from the bylaw review committee as written. But I would like to see what the other selectmen or people in the audience have to say about this. Does anybody have any comments or thoughts?
You can't comment on something you don't have a copy.
I also support the recommended changes from the bylaw review committee.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And this is the one that you want to make final for the town meeting?
Yeah, to include the comments, where you'll see in the right, several pages down, you'll start to see comments or remarks and revisions. I'm willing to accept the final output from our bylaw review committee. I think that, from my perspective, the number, there are nine members of that. And I think it was diverse enough that they actually had a broader reach to the community than even the three boards of selectmen would. As a matter of fact, some of those members were, my bigger, like, the inputs that I got were from some of those same people on both sides of the aisle that were explaining their positions, so whoever they were speaking to, I think had more influence to how they came to that meeting and their, what their recommendation was, so.
I was wondering about, I don't know if Andrew, if you know much about, or if anyone here knows much about the right-to-farm laws, and if the odor requirements, if that's covered under right-to-farm laws, does that rub up against these proposed?
The only thing is that the cultivation process is not considered to be an agricultural use, it's considered to be an industrial use, so it wouldn't fall under a right-to-farm statute.
That's the section I want to get to, we'll get there. Because we had discussion about how we were going to do the odor.
Did odor complaints come to us or under the zoning bylaw? Because I thought of, maybe it was a zoning one.
We had discussed whether or not that would go under Board of Health regulation.
That's my understanding, the Board of Health wasn't interested in really regulating odor, so it's still kind of out there.
Well, it's listed in our bylaws, so.
Is that the one that say, the numbers of complaints that lead to action?
That's something to get into now, just reading the distances now, trying to see exactly what they put in for the changes, so I'm really trying to cover.
You said the Board of Health isn't interested in participating in this process?
Not as far as creating a separate regulation for odor.
Oh, but where we referenced, the Board of Health will go out to do something, they don't mind being that agent of the Board of Selectmen under this? Because they're not having to do a separate regulation or bylaw, but they're kind of by name said, we get an odor complaint, after we get five of them, we're sending the Board of Health out to do some investigation.
I'll follow up on that one, because it was, I asked whether or not they'd be interested in doing the separate bylaw, I didn't ask about that permission.
Okay. Because if, well, we don't have an agent that works for the Board of Selectmen in any type of zoning enforcement. Because even our zoning enforcement officer is. Because even our zoning enforcement officer is a zoning bylaw enforcement officer. So, who would we use if we didn't do that? We'd have to name it to a.
If we don't own the equipment, we're going to have to hire it out anyways because we don't own that equipment. If the Board of Health doesn't want to get into the equipment ownership and the testing, then we're going to need to.
Yeah, but the truth is, the Board of Health is the only board that has jurisdiction, unless you go to the state DEP. Air quality is not under zoning, it's not under Board of Selectmen, it's a Board of Health.
Well, if, if the town approves this and this orders that the Board of Health is going to do it, then the Board of Health has to do it. If this bylaw is implemented, then the Board of Health can't say we don't want to do it.
Yeah, if the bylaw is brought in, you're right. Because even though they're elected, it's still a bylaw that tells the elected officials what they can't.
And then they will have to come up with the proper testing equipment and the manner to do it in. This directs the Board of Health.
It would just basically put onto them to, you know, hire a consultant. I would think hire a consultant that would be able to do that type of testing. I would, I can't see us going out purchasing a piece of equipment for.
Depends, but given, last time when I proposed changes at the transfer station and things, it's within the jurisdiction without running it by them first. I really think this language, we need to at least give them respect of showing them this language and explain what it's going to mean before we put this in the town meeting floor. I think, I think we definitely owe them that and I definitely, I have learned from last time that no intent to do anything harmful or derogatory towards them, but certainly perceived that way. So, I still don't like the number of five. I think it's going to affect one direct neighbor, one direction as well, you know, so that person could be greatly affected and have no relief, which is not reasonable to, to an abutter. If there is a real problem, that one person, there's nothing they can do about it, and that's not.
But you're never going to be able to necessarily define whether that one person is just got a vendetta against a neighbor or not.
Right, and I, and I discussed that.
And that's why we thought at least more than one should, well, that's why the bylaw review committee came up and said, "We thought a certain odd number other than one should be there."
Bring it up with three.
It could be, it could be three or three consecutive days of complaint. So, if it persists for three days of complaint, then we would act on it. Not like they say, "Oh, I smell something now," but there would have to be three consecutive days.
Three days of complaints is no different than the same person just calling in three days in a row because they don't like their neighbor.
But at least they've done it three days in a row, and then if they're.
It doesn't have to be three people living as a butters either, in my opinion. It just has to be three people willing to put their name on it. So, it could be the person that lives there and two of their friends that come over and say, "I smell it too."
States of butters.
I'm suggesting that that might be something that's acceptable is, five is fine, but five needs to be.
Complaints within this.
Five separate people putting their name on it that's over 18 years old. So, it can't be a whole family of two parents and seven kids signing something saying, "This bothers me." So, they can invite friends over and say, "This is bothering me."
Five complaints.
They say, "Yep, I'm smelling it too," and then now you got five.
Five complaints of odor within this abutter zone from five different residences in town. So, we'd have to get complaints from five different residences that there's an odor within the zone.
Or a single complaint with five names.
This needs cleaning up, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether or not.
This is my one hangup when we went through the stuff.
Rather than putting cap on it, maybe just putting like a, I want to say a statement of like a reasonable, you know, I want to say a reasonable, you know, complaints with reasonable credibility or something like that, but.
That's why you just need four more people to put a name on it. A single complaint has to have the five names.
To be enforced.
So, if it's bothering someone enough, they'll call a friend over and say, "Could you smell this? Do you agree? Could you put your name on this?" You move on. And that's their way of validating, it's not just them and their personality. That you need to get, if you feel more comfortable with three names instead of five, I'm not saying like I want a, you know, warrant petition signature list. I just meant.
So, I'll take that word, I'll send it to the Board of Health for their recommendation on that. Maybe we can come back to the table the next meeting with their recommendation.
And we should.
Because the cost of that third-party consultant is not going to be found anywhere.
And we could also.
We've got to figure out, that's one of the funding issues is, who's paying for them to go out and check this and find out, "Yeah, it's not a problem."
We say a value of seven on this DT scale that they're.
Guessing that was pulled from a state reg, like more details in the state reg.
What if we further define that, that if upon investigation, the value is lower than is three or lower? That person shall be, you know, if they have two complaints from that same parties, in both, in both of those times the values are lower than four, subsequent complaints to that party shall not be entertained. If someone's made a false complaint, an attempt at a complaint, it is very low, he said, "Look, it's only this value, you're wasting time and money." If they do it again and it's that low, they shouldn't have.
The elite.
Or maybe they have to pay for the, pay for it. If they make another one, they begin to pay for those.
The only thing is, you know, if you, if it's kind of like an intermittent, you know, because atmospheric conditions can greatly change how.
Absolutely.
You know, where the smell is. So, you could make a complaint one day and go out later on that day and it's late, and do an investigation, not smell it.
And that's why.
Here's the worst part. So, we'll follow up. How quickly are we going to follow up? Board of Health going to get the third-party consultant out there the next day or in a month? Month goes by, I think you mentioned flower season or whatever, the high smell season is only potentially two to three weeks. So, I'm complaining. They show up four weeks later, there's nothing to complain about.
How about, how about something like this?
It's a hard one.
Upon receiving the five complaints, the air shall be tested within two weeks. That way, if it's still going in two weeks, we have a legit complaint, we file it. And then if it's there two weeks later, which it shouldn't be, it will be done.
Five complaints ever? Or five complaints within?
Within the zone. Five complaints within the zone by five different parties. So, instead of saying five abutters.
He means like timeline.
I mean in a time sense, yeah.
No, I'm saying if, if, if we have the five people complain, which trips the test, we must do, perform that test within two weeks.
But the thing about the five complaints he's saying is, if a site gets a fifth complaint after year four? Or is it, you get five complaints within a growing season?
Well, there you go.
Or.
We'd have to say we have five complaints within a certain timeframe, too. If we get five complaints within a two-week period, then we must have the air tested within two weeks from the fifth complaint being received. Now, if you have four complaints, then six months later you get a fifth, okay, we'll test. And now we're back to zero, we start to count over. But, but actually, if it's, it'd have to be at the end of two weeks you get the fifth complaint. If it's, if it's three weeks, we have complaint number five, that's really complaint number one. We need to have five complaints within a two-week or within a one-week period. And then we'd have a week or two, do you know what I mean? We could keep it tighter and say, "Five complaints in a week, and then we must test within a week." And if we say five complaints in two weeks, then we'll make the test period within two weeks. I think those should be similar. If we're going to say five complaints in a month, then we need to perform the test within the next month. I think those should be balanced. If we're going to give a larger room for the complaints to come in, we need to give a larger room for testing time to get out there and do it.
The problem with the complaints varies depending on, again, the type of site. Outdoor cultivation is somewhat excluded from that already.
Right.
Because I think they even excluded it from that, knowing outdoor cultivation is not.
The indoor is very strict on the property edge, the outdoors is 300 feet.
Okay, that's what I meant, but in just a sec.
I'm thinking a week.
But the problem is, you could have a certain indoor facility that, one week a month, is always for some reason creating a lot of stink. Who knows why? It could be an operational issue, a maintenance issue where, and it's become a neighborhood issue. But you can never show up when the testing works because the complaint goes in the week that it smells, and then a week later it doesn't smell, the test. At some point, the data is going to support that this is a false call, but the reality may mean it's actually happening, but we can never time the testing to the complaint and the actual existence. And that's what I'm trying to think of. Is there a way to write this to cover that problem?
To write it to cover the problem, we're going to have to go out for, as you said, any complaint anyone makes, and it's going to, not just the annoyance of false complaints, but it's going to, it's going to be expensive. If someone decides to make five complaints, we have to run off five times. We have to limit our liability in testing as well. I don't want to belittle somebody's discomfort if it smells, but if, I think if we give it a week window and a week to test.
I got one thing to follow up on that then. And maybe what we need to do is a little research, whether you go to the Cannabis Commission, the CCC, see if they have any information on this, but who would be your third-party consultant? And can they tell you how quickly they can turn around a request to go test something? Because that's the boundaries we got to figure out.
We made up.
Because it doesn't matter if we say two weeks and the guy's like, "I can't get there for a month. I got seven towns calling me."
The other way I've seen it written up is basically that somebody with a, you know, a reasonable sense of smell, if they can go out and smell it, you can attest to the fact that it smells.
Yeah, but everybody thinks their version of smell is reasonable.
I'm just saying, for an agent that acting on behalf of the town.
And that, that might be the easier way to do it, because we try to set definitions immediately as to whether we're going to buy an equipment, train people, maintain training, and go use this equipment, whatever costs you use and whatever unknown basis we have. We may say a reasonable person senses smell and designate a Board of Health agent to do it, and it's done. And there may never be a complaint, and we may never have an issue. And all this may be for naught. And if it becomes a further issue, that's, I see part of our limiting of three, when it was discussed here on the floor that we shouldn't have any limits. Limiting of three lets us see what we have to deal with here before we go to more. And then we'll know if we do need to take further action, purchase certain equipment and make certain changes before we get into more facilities. So, that may be a very reasonable way, to say a person with reasonably normal olfactory senses determines that it is an unreasonably pungent or overpowering smell, that he can smell it, that it's unreasonable. Because as we said in this town, when people fertilize their fields, especially with chicken feces, it's very offensive and it stays for a couple weeks. It's, it's just part of living in farm country and we all know it. I wouldn't, you know, to get rid of that, I'd have to move out of the country and I wouldn't want to do it. I like country living. It's part of what we deal with. People that come here, you laugh at them. City folk, they go, "Oh, what does that smell? Ah," they'll get used to it. That's just the way it is.
What's your thoughts on this?
I'm curious what, if the CCC has recommendations for dealing with odor generally, also if they would be a resource in procuring the equipment, maybe on a rental basis. But then also, I also wonder what other towns do. I researched this, I think, this week. This is very interesting to me. Also, I wonder if there could be a committee that could do, without the olfactory machine, a reasonable smell of a human, if you have a committee that has a quorum to vote on site, if it should come up, I wonder. So, that way you're not relying on one person, their, whatever their nose tells them, or whatever their bias is and whatever.
I could just leave it to the Board of Selectmen. You could, you could say that, you'd send the town administrator to go out there and take a smell. If he smells it, call him. Just say, "Hey, you know, I smell something. I'm going to ask for the members of the board to come out with me."
That's a reasonable way to do it.
That'll require a minimum of two days wait, because we can't go out there as a board to do it without an open meeting call.
We can individually.
Right. I just meant we couldn't all.
Right.
Four of us go there to go.
But Andrew could.
What do you think?
What do you think? Andrew could schedule us each, come out with him and, and take our own opinion. He can take a poll and have our opinions.
And go, "Hey, we got a couple complaints. I went up there, they're legitimate complaints. I think you guys should go out there and take a look yourself if you think, if you, if you guys agree."
I'm supportive of that, because I think at least you're still getting three different people, three different opinion.
If he finds there's concern or an odor, he can pick three people at his discretion, to include at least one board member. But three people at his discretion, could be all three board members, whatever he chooses, and he will take their opinions confidently and make an assessment of the odor.
Works for me.
Seems the easiest way.
So, that's more of an internal policy. We can just still keep to what we're doing. We just got to determine if we still think five is the reasonable number.
Yep.
And the Board of Health thing is something we still got to figure out. If we're going to call them in, or if it's the Board of Selectmen, we'll follow through. And with our powers, we can then ask the Board of Health to support it with more determined testing.
I would think at that point, because you're, you're talking about a licensing bylaw, that would give you the authority to just have a licensing hearing on that person and basically say, you know, "You had, we went up there, it's been, we've had five documented complaints. We went up there, observed the smellers, you know, the odor ourselves. We're putting a 30-day, you know, you have 30 days to correct."
And this, once again, being a bylaw, will give us the authority to make this determination, but maybe that authority should be made initially with Andrew and the Board of Health agent to go out together and determine if they want to bring three other people in and include them in it if they want to.
I kind of like the other way.
But I don't think.
Start with the Board of Selectmen, and then if we all agree, then we bring in the professionals, do the higher-level detail testing. And that would be the Board of Health, not us.
I don't think we need the higher-level detail testing at that point. If it's that offensive, then it's that offensive, and we need to try to address it. In fairness to anybody there, I mean, if it knocks your socks off and it's that bad, then it's that bad.
Right. I'm just saying that we're still talking about three different individuals providing that opinion. So, you might think it's that offensive. He might not, and I might be in the middle ground. Well, at this point, ask the Board of Health to bring in the guy to test the air. Because now we've learned that three of us have a completely different sense of smell on this issue.
Unless, you could say in the events that the, that there's not a clear opinion that we would do testing.
Right, but I'm saying that doesn't even have to be in the bylaw. It just has to say that the Board of Selectmen will follow up on the complaint. And then just internal policy, we work through all that, because otherwise the bylaw does become more complicated and cumbersome versus just, we reach out and request the Board of Health to assist us and.
So, we take out the health agent on down and say that the Board of Selectmen's designee will determine.
The Board of Selectmen, not even designee. The Board of Selectmen will, and will do it however we choose to do it.
Once we have the five different complaints, wipe out everything below that and say the Board of Selectmen will evaluate.
Initiate an investigation.
This investigation.
I like that better, yeah, just. Things are going to change. Technology will change. If we get too detailed in the bylaw, we're just rewriting it every team.
And that's vague enough that we can form our policy on it and have our policy which can be modified. You know, the Board of Selectmen will, will make that determination in accordance with their policies. And then our policy now should be, we'd send Andrew out there and then if need be, we'd bring in three other people. And that allows us to set a policy which we can change as needed, but it does cover it legally. I feel comfortable with it then. I just, I'm very uncomfortable with how that's written.
Okay.
Otherwise, I agree with you. As they made their changes, recommendations, I had no issues with their recommendations except that section. That's the, that's the one.
Anybody else in the, yes, Tom?
How quickly would the town notify business that a complaint has been filed? I hope that I never get a complaint, but if I were to get a complaint, I'd like to know about it that day and not two weeks later, so that I can address it as fast as I possibly can.
I agree. Now, I don't know if there's state regulations that actually tell us how we have to respond or if the state has to, but I would that if a complaint is received on a business day, the town will make an attempt to contact that person during business hours of the day the complaint was received, just to notify a complaint was received, no details. Want you to know, complaint was received, we'll be following up and we'll be in touch with you. Like, that generic, that vague, doesn't matter what the complaint was, but that allows us to gather the evidence before we misspeak. But we are letting you know, we received the complaint, and you know the day that we can actually do that.
I would define within one business day, because if the plane comes in at four, we might not get in touch. I'd say, "We shall notify you within one business day."
I would suggest we don't put it in the bylaw, though. I think what we need to do is build a policy in how we will follow the bylaw.
We can certainly do that.
So, otherwise.
But we're in agreement.
We're not going to have a bylaw ready by June.
We'd want to let you know as soon as possible. I would agree the same thing. I would suggest as soon, if he gets a complaint, he should even pick up the phone and call you, "Hey, someone made a complaint."
And if a policy goes into place and the Board of Selectmen approve it, we are just as accountable to that as. And if a policy goes into place and the board of selectmen approve it, we are just as accountable to that as a bylaw. So.
I don't anticipate.
We can change it quicker. But we are account, if, if it's been approved, it's, might as well be a bylaw.
Given your neighbor's support in the, in the proximity of this, the distance away from, I, I can't imagine that there's gonna be complaints, but I've never been near a multi-acre marijuana field. I have no idea, you know, what's gonna happen. And this is part of the experimental stage in the cap at three. We don't know yet. But we're not, we don't wanna discourage it. We just wanna figure out how we have to deal with it as it goes, if we have to deal with it. We may not, hopefully don't have to.
Any further comments? Anything new? All right, I would like to, with the caveat of fixing that paragraph, um, we'll work through that draft and at the next, true me, not next week, but in two weeks, hopefully we'll be at a point where we can maybe vote to say, this is the bylaw we wanna present at town. So we can say we're done with it. That's what we got.
I would be comfortable, Matt, with striking that part and making that amendment literally here now. So we can release this next Monday as well. I mean, we're getting close enough to, I'd like to give more town rather than wait another week or two more weeks. I'd rather get this out to the town to review. Cause if this is our, our, we're putting it forward, I'd like people to be able to read it and get comfortable with it so they can ask us questions before meeting rather than wait to meeting floor. If people have questions, they could call the administrator on these and we can do clarifications over the next month.
Well, that's what I'm saying if he, you can still revise and send it to us, so we'll review, but on the twentieth. Is that the Monday? Yeah. Is that a holiday?
No, no.
Okay, it had a weird color to it. So I was like.
Canadian holiday.
Okay, thank you. So on the twentieth, we'd actually do our vote to say we agree, but that still gives the public a month to review that before we get to the town meeting. I don't think the public has seen a bylaw thirty days before a town meeting since I've been here. That wasn't, it could change.
Right. That'd be my only.
I'm not disagreeing with you though, that the, the earlier we can get it, better.
Soon is better and I'd love.
But I'd like to see him have it typed out without comments and this is.
Yeah, and, and remove all the stricken lines and stuff.
And now we're not basing it on motions that she's gotta make sure she writes the meeting minutes right, so we know that that's what we voted on, so that he.
With the caveat that if he happened to reprint it without the stricken lines and change it by next Monday, I'd be willing to vote on it Monday. Get it out there sooner, that's all. But at least if it's done for Monday, we could review it and make sure it is fully clean before then. We could review it by email and.
He's not gonna get to that though, cause he's looking to take two to three days off between now and Monday. It's like he earned vacation or something and then gets to use it. Yeah.
Can we make sure we have copies of this for the public hearing?
Most definitely. And that's one of the things we've all been talking about, even with the planning board, is we want your final.
Yep.
Not one that we're at ninety-nine percent, but we got one more meeting. I'm hoping we have final for, from every board that's gonna present a, a bylaw.
Because I've heard complaints about bylaws being given to them at town meeting and they're having to read through it.
That happened last year to us.
Yeah.
The day before.
I completely agree. So I would like to make sure that we can do that and.
Hence why somebody.
Technically, have you guys set your public hearing meeting?
You already set it.
June sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a financial meeting, so I don't think we technically set it for them. So I just didn't know if you guys had done that.
We're all on the same page.
And that's okay. You know, I just didn't want to assume because we said something that you guys are like.
Earlier, but that's okay.
Okay.
Gives them a chance to read things.
And that, it's two weeks prior to town meeting. And exactly. And if anybody has questions, continue to spread the word now about the schedule. Maybe we should post the schedule?
Yes.
On the website saying.
It's getting hot. I just feel like I'm like sweating. We shut off on Andrew. It's just getting hot in here.
And then.
It was cool earlier, but now I'm sitting here sweating.
And maybe if there's any way we can actually get a way to try to get a headcount of people that might want to be there. I don't know if there's a way to do that online or not, or if it's too close to make it a useful effort. Just so we don't print out seven hundred copies and find out two people show up versus.
We anticipated, or you mean for the public hearing?
Yeah.
If you do an event, you know, where they're interested in that, it's a good way.
Oh, yeah, Facebook event that's interested going.
Check here if you'd like a copy of the bylaw or you mean.
I like the concept of the event though, cause it does. But then Andrew's gonna have to be crazy watching the comments. Cause Facebook.
Well, you don't know.
You can just say, we're our kind of, you can have commentary.
And I'm comfortable with it. Now, don't get me wrong. My comment was about the lowest common denominator, not the average person that's watching and looking, so. Unless they feel they're the highest common denominator and that's okay too. Anyway, I have no more. We started with the public hearing and the delay, so I didn't get to it in the beginning. Do you have something, Sam?
Can I like to wait until we discuss the annual town media hours?
Okay then.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Solar update? Not much more than what I presented from the last meeting. Um, I am waiting for some additional quotes back from, um, Woodward and Turner to see what the pricing would be to do a analysis on a cap for the town farm road site. So that way I can have full price, you know, full pricing RFP before going out for pricing, but you know, nothing's changed as far as market conditions where we're at and, you know, the utility studies, so. Still plug it away, just.
Got a question?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm very unfamiliar with the site, so forgive me if someone's gonna blow up on me when I say this. If I'm correct, the town did two years ago accept a parcel of land. Was it the Heim Trafalgar Square or something like that? It was about a hundred and, that, and then the next year, they said they wanted it for conservation purposes. Solar energy is a energy conservation measure. It's considered green. I don't know how much of that site actually is already open. Cause I know it's not all trees, nor is it all, so that's what I meant. Has anybody talked about as putting that into the RFP as another place for them to look and tell us what's viable?
The only thing is they put it under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission.
So we just gotta ask them if it's something they'd consider? It's conservation. They can say, no, we don't agree with it. That's all I meant. We just asked.
And I think it was under the assumption that it'd be conserved for passive recreation. But I mean, I can, I can double check on that. I just, I think there was.
Thought the bylaw was, may not have said anything about passive.
I just don't know whether or not that violates, even if, even if it doesn't, I don't know if that violates the spirit of the donation, just because it's, you know.
Again, I'm not saying put two megawatts on it, but it's right next to our water pump station. You put in some solar there, you tie it actually to the water pump building and now you're not paying for your electric for your water pumps.
Is it on?
I think it wraps around the water pump property, or the water pump property was in the corner. Just thoughts?
Yeah.
I, I don't wanna push it any further. And like I said, I'm not really trying to push it, cause I know a lot of people look at it as a visual. Some other people look at it as truly a conservation measure to try to reduce the impact on your environment. And depending on the size of it, it could just be an example of, here's your forest and here's what we're doing to try to maintain your forest. You know, it's more of an educational opportunity in that. So you're not putting a huge system, you're just doing it almost like maybe a charging station for a car could be there too.
One of the big advantages of the town farm roadside is that with that, landfill piece is that, you know, the, the incentives for the state are really for capped landfills. That they're more incentivizing the sighting on there because they know that there's no real other use of a landfill than to put something, than to put a solar. You can't develop anything on top of it. So they almost hold them at a higher priority and provide additional tax credits versus just clear cutting open space or, you know, just having a town-owned parcel and going, we wanna put it there. So, you know, even if we were to take the, you know, that parcel of land on Town Farm Road and split it off, that the, that the, the landfill's over here and we're gonna put the solar over here, the incentives wouldn't be the same. So the, I think that the landfill piece of it is kinda critical to the viability of it. Cause we did look at another parcel that was a tax titled parcel, but it was just, you know, I, I, I didn't get the same kind of sense that it was as desired as a, as, as a capped landfill. But one of the other options would be.
Now, the question is, there's never a site assignment there, right?
I don't believe so.
It's just historically believed to have been a landfill that got covered because people watched and listened and saw it all the time.
It's on.
Not because it was. That's what I need better understanding, so I understand why someone could even look at it and say it meets the landfill because it's not on D P's list of landfill.
It is.
It is? I didn't see that.
It's a, it's a incomplete uncapped landfill. It's on their, it's on their list.
So, okay, that was my first time I actually understood that they have it on their list. Okay.
Incomplete, so we could stop putting trash in again?
People still do.
Kidding. Don't even say that.
But it's in one of those, it's, it's just in one of those gray areas right now of that, there's a lot of those on the state's list and they're not in the, I say the business right now of going after the ones that are just sitting there. It's just whether or not you start kinda poking the bear and saying, we wanna do something with this. We want the D P's attention on this. We need the, cause you need a post-closure certificate from the D P in order to develop, to develop the solar on top of it. So if they come out now and you're involving them in the process, they're gonna, they might say whether or not you put a solar, you put a solar panel on this or not, we're still gonna require you to put a cap on it. That's where you, that's where you might run into a little bit of an issue, especially where I think that it greatly benefit us to get a cost from, from an engineer to say this is what the price would be to do it. So that way, before we start going out there and knowing what the, you know, what the potential impact is, if we never did end up doing solar, turned out to be unfeasible because of, you know, the market conditions or utility caps or what have you, at least we know if we start getting the D P involved, what the cost of capping that would be. So I guess that's, you know, that's the real reason why I'd like to try to get those numbers in place before kinda throw the feelers out there to potential developers to say, what can you do for us?
Additionally, other things we can do, reaching out to Quavon Regional High School. My understanding, and I might not be completely accurate, is one of the, when you talk about net minimum funding requirement from the state for schools that is.
Minimum, yeah, net school spending.
Thank you. Net school spending. If you have solar, that offsets that. You don't have to count the saved energy from solar as part of your budget line item. So that we could work with them and then they could consider that part of their budget and then pay it back to us based on the actual production. So if we use their site or work with them in their site and share the cost of developing something on their site, they can actually pay us out of their budget without it seeming like they had to increase their budget because they didn't meet the net minimum. In other words, it's not like a, oh, we're just gonna pay less as part of the assessment. It's, they do it and then they pay us back as part of their benefit for having a reduced utility cost. They're paying us because we helped pay for the actual install.
I, I don't think it would.
So they're buying it from us in a way.
But I think that goes back as to whether or not we wanna be the ones to fund the development or if we just wanna be in the business of leasing property.
Right, or we just tell them and they can go figure that out without us. That leasing the property thing or, but I'm speaking also of Bruggles Lane. We own that building. They're just running the, so that, I know you said we're, how close are we getting them into our green communities package?
We're looking to do it into the next fiscal year. We just need to send the, the Department of Energy Resources, the baseline assessment stuff, that, that's working with C R P C. They have their consultants working on that, so.
It's, okay.
Basically, we're, the goal was the next grant round, which is.
How many years of trends do you need?
Three, five? I think, I believe. I believe it's five years of trend.
Because that's one that we can definitely do an entire facility LED upgrade. Schools are traditionally a huge lighting load and you can almost save anywhere from twenty-five to forty percent of your light, your electric bill just by doing that upgrade. I'm just thinking about the solar places because the town owns lots of property. I don't wanna look at something that's just a two-megawatt-sized lot. Where else can we put it that's useful?
I think one of the, one of the most beneficial spots would be on the roof of a public safety building to offset the direct costs on that building.
That's an expensive electric bill of about two thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, you're looking at about.
Can you roll that into the RFP?
As a potential.
Depends on how you, yeah, it's more like a.
I mean, we might just do that as a standalone RFP. Just to say what would the cost be on that, because then you're not.
Right, but.
Make it get contingent.
Then each person can't combine all the options to say, we could give you this if we use these three buildings and do this. Instead it's, you get this, you get that, you get that. But because each one's separate, I can't sit here and actually negotiate with you that.
Well, the other thought is that, you know, we don't end up, you know, whoever we end up leasing that property to, we could come out with a clear indication that we're not interested in purchasing any of the solar, any of the, the solar credits from the property. It's up to the developer to go and sell that to somebody else. And we basically go and put, you know, we do the same thing like we did on the D P W building, put the solar, put the solar panels on that, on that building ourselves to offset the cost. And then that site selling basically just the, just the property to a developer and saying it's up to you to go find the people who are willing to purchase the solar credits. Rather than using it to offset our own use.
Well, I was thinking being even more generic. It's just, here's a site, tell me the best you can offer. Here's a site, tell me the best you can offer and they can choose lease, they can choose P P A, they can choose this, they, and then they're like, this is what I can offer you.
The first question they're asked, they'll, they'll probably ask is, are we, are we supplying electricity in any town building? And then you basically have to take out any buildings that are already, or any accounts that are already being funded through the Iron Horse Agreement. So you can't offset that.
Only if it's completely funded, right? You can use percentages.
Right.
But could we also just sell electricity to the school? Even if it's a different site used.
Under the new A O B C smart program, you can. And it's not actually the smart program. The A O B C is the supplementary program they created that works with the smart program. And what it is, is it's got to be a standalone system. And once it is, the owner of that site can transfer credits to any other customer from National Grid within National Grid's territory. They don't even have to be your own accounts anymore.
Okay. But the, the good thing, of course, of schools, I'm sure they have a hefty electric bill, probably supersedes the public safety building, I would imagine, by two or three times.
Really questions whether or not they've already taken that step to purchase solar credits. I can't guarantee with any, that they haven't.
It's worth looking into, that's all. Cause that would be a, a good way to use the funds if we could do that and put up a site. I'd imagine the, the mono-solar they could put in the police station would be far more than we could use at the police station. So if we did say, put them on the roof of the police station.
Stations are biggest electrical user outside of the school.
Right, but still.
I'm just saying there's not enough square footage on that roof to keep up. Cause it's one hundred percent electric heat and like, and cooling.
I'd be surprised if they couldn't provide more than we need for that building. I looked at my, my barn before, which is considerably smaller in size, and I was gonna offset. And my bill was running about eight hundred, nine hundred a month, so almost half what they're doing there. And I could've done it off my barn, or I had fourteen.
Ask him what the last. Heating electric bill at the public safety building was.
Two thousand was the last.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
A month, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's about twenty.
Double what mine was. And my surface size of the roof is probably a quarter.
It's about twenty-five thousand.
No, your roof is self facing, no?
The barn roof is, yeah, it was self, yeah.
So, I mean, it. It doesn't matter. We'll work it out, we'll figure it out. I'm sorry, I, I got down a rabbit hole here. My bad.
But I, I, I bet we could get.
Yes, Sam.
Chief Police mentioned to me during some of our discussions. And Andrew did as well, is that cost thirty thousand dollars a year for electricity for the, for the safety building.
Right, that's why I think that the rooftop system on there correctly offsetting that would probably be the most direct impact to reducing our energy usage.
And over a twenty-five year life, we're looking at, you know.
It also depends if you do a twenty-five, twenty-five kilowatt or smaller. You get caught up a little bit in the, the smaller scale and the cost to install, but you have no interconnection agreement. It's just you put it on, you don't, National Grid's not gonna be able to say you can't.
Right, we don't have to worry about dealing with utilities we come.
It's, it's pretty much a, yep, you're good. You're not gonna hurt our system, you're not big enough.
Right, we don't have to worry about being five years down the line waiting until the utility, you know.
Actually, I think that level, am I right? Automatically fits into the National Grid net metering because that's the only cap that still has room left is that, or it's just an automatic, like they're not even measuring it.
Like sell eight.
Because it's twenty-five kilowatts, we're gonna give you two dollars a month the rest of our lives and it's still not gonna make a difference.
They're like sell eight of eight of however they were, aren't portioning it off and they were seventy-five percent through that sell. So that was why we were look, you know, was looking at, by the time we did our due diligence, you know, selected a contractor, had them put, go into the queue, they were already looking at the next big grant round. There's gotta be somebody who's gonna jump up and fill those last twenty-five percent of the last sell of the S R program.
You know, so maybe it's, maybe it's worth letting that one stand on its own, that as an R F P and try to get it.
Yeah, you can. My thought was just having a little broader stroke meant that somebody can come to us with options that are beyond what we can actually imagine sitting at the table.
But also if we do that, we also come, you know, come from this project up to where it's gonna be harder for us to act a move. If something comes good in one piece like this, we could move. You know, if we have three pieces together, looking at it, maybe harder to get a project going and even longer.
We won't be able to act on anything probably at least until special town meeting because we won't have any funds for it. So this is all preliminary, figure out what it would cost and then we go to the town, so we're kind of in a weird spot.
It would probably take that long to get an agreement going with the company and this, but if, as standalone, I don't think we get close on, as a part of a three or four piece project, I don't think we get close by next fall. I don't think.
I agree.
At least getting something agreed upon. So if this stands alone, we'd have a good chance of having that ready for the special town meeting and moving forward with it, which would be a step in the right direction.
Okay.
Start working.
I hear you. Okay, so, let me just make sure here. Let's go to the annual town meeting warrant.
Do you want to hit the license quick and the contracts and, these will be quick.
Is somebody here for those?
I don't know.
Those are administrative. I figured I would just talk to the things that I think people really care about, not, I want a liquor license or I wanna hire somebody. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Cool.
We do have other things here we could talk about if they're interested.
Quick is all I, I like getting stuff checked off the list, but.
Yeah.
But it doesn't really matter, right? They're not here.
So, annual town meeting warrant. Uh, June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, Worcester. This is a draft that we got, pretty much articles one through.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. No, 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 one through.
All the basics.
Sixteen are our standard administrative type basics, whether it's budget, uh, right to choose town officers, chapter ninety grant. Nothing that I believe we're gonna be debating as to whether we'd put it on it or revise it or change it.
Correct.
Um, at this time. Um, getting into article seventeen, we get into the capital plan of the one police cruiser a year, every five years due to our demand use and wear and tear. So, once again, this is also on the warrant, had been requested. Article eighteen, police service revolver replacement. Any questions on that?
Probably discuss that.
Right. D P W sweeper, they've been asking for this for a few years now. At least in the capital planning side. I don't wanna say it's ever made it to town floor because I think it's been cut a few times.
I thought it did and then they just never won up purchasing.
It got closer, the skid steer, I think, made it to the warrant and the sweeper was a chapter ninety fund request that went back and forth.
That's maybe what it was in chapter ninety, so I, but.
So it was more of a board of selectmen sign off of the chapter ninety fund, right?
Didn't wind up going.
But you're right, it's been here for a couple of years.
Absolutely.
So, and they need it, if you've noticed. The roads are a little bit rocky and sandy and gravelly. We need the street sweeper. Article twenty, D P W mower. New mower for the D P W. Do we know more descriptions on the type of mower they're talking about? Is this a?
Just a jet, like a.
John Deere Parks mower?
Second eight thousand, they were looking for about eight thousand dollars for a parks department.
When's the last time we did a mower?
I think they said it was like two years ago, but this was in, they have.
Right, we have several, right?
Yeah.
So we hadn't, so we replaced one, two years ago. I don't think that's too bad. They gotta have, I would think, three or four.
Well. Right, not.
They've gotta be in a replacement period too.
Was there wording, maybe, maybe this is more supporting the cemetery commission? The last mower was like the parks, this is kinda, yeah.
Cause they, they kinda merged that all into one.
I remember that now, okay. Article twenty-one, fire department equipment. Needs to be much more specific than fire department equipment. What is he asking for?
This is basically equipment that was, uh, like, uh, that was to go onto the new engine that was coming, so. Their plan was to take as much from the current engine four to move to the new engine four, but stuff like, um, like the lad, I think, I was talking about a few ladders that were from. The predecessor to that engine and that they weren't gonna be able to salvage, um, new, uh.
Did he provide a breakdown and a total estimate on this?
For a breakdown, he said he was, this was preliminary, it was kind of, I, I, you know, had a conversation, the warrant was closing, he was still looking for pricing, but asked. I'm still getting pricing in, so if you could just put it on there for now, uh, I will have more detail to. Or outlay, but he said it was about seven thousand dollars worth of equipment that they were looking to do for outfitting. Apparently, I think it was radios and intake valve and ladders were the pri- three primary things that I can remember off the top of my head that were more of like when the new. Truck came in, it was gonna be better off for them to purchase new rather than recycling. But I will provide, I, I still have to bring that to the finance committee to, uh, cause it was, it was a late request.
Right, and also maybe the finance committee could let us know if it's something they'd rather put into the omnibus budget and increase the equipment line item versus here because it.
Can you speak as to your experience with intake valves and things? I don't want to. I don't know if, if you provide any insight to those things.
They're critical.
Just explain what it is.
Oh, it's basically, it's a, um, for establishing water supply, um, the intake valve.
Your suction valve from the pond to fill the tanker?
Well, the, the, the in, the intake for, on the engine as to, uh, where the, where your hard suction connects into the, uh, into the engine, that's pretty much, uh. What's that?
Ridge pipe.
Yeah, your ridge pipe. So that's where you're going in from, you know, static water source into your pump, so your primary attack line comes from the tank. Or your fir-, your initial line comes from the tank, then you have to establish it a lot, you know, once you go through your first thousand, uh, say a thousand gallons of water, you then have to establish a water supply. That's your main source into the engine from your water supply.
The intake valves where you connect your hose that's going to your alternate source of water.
If it's, right, one's pond versus truck or hydrant.
Right.
That's where the valve comes in.
Yeah.
You could explain that to me.
Yes.
So the valves are, you may have two intake valves, one for different reasons?
Right.
The pond obviously has much more straining and filtering capability.
It's a straight pipe.
Yeah.
It's a draft, it's like a straw.
Okay.
But if somebody's sending water to you from a truck or from a hydrant.
Oh, they can maintain pressure in the line, so it doesn't have to be as hard piped?
That valve is gated, so you can control what volume of waters, the pressures coming into your engine.
Okay.
Because if you overpressure the intake or overpressure the hose lines in the output, and those typically, for some reason, we don't use that often, they gum up and they stick and they bind. Reusing an old one is.
Oh, okay, I get you.
It's like a faucet in your house, you know, sooner or later the seals dry out, things stick. You find a ball valve you've been operating and using, you gotta turn it, the handle comes off in your hand.
Yeah.
It's no different.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And it's a pretty crucial.
Yeah, and I'm not denying it's needed, I'm just saying, does it need a separate article or should it just be in the omnibus budget and they rank it not? Let the finance committee come back to us and say, keep the article or we decided to roll it in.
Lateral the old valve, but we've had a lot of issues with some of the valves in that truck over the years because they've already been recycled. It's, it's.
What's going on with the Felton field improvements? Cause apparently the money we gave them last year, they didn't spend yet.
So that was, uh, the total amount that they had requested, it was about, the amount that was appropriate, it was about half of the amount that they needed overall. So that was originally, um, the. Removal of the, it was primarily the removal of the trees. Now they're looking at the removal of the stumps and regrading of the driveway and that's why they're looking for additional funds to supplement that. So basically an additional, uh, it's not that they haven't spent it, they're still with, they, they're, they've, they're waiting for the bill to expend.
Is there any way D P W can work with regrading the driveway?
That'd be a good question for next week.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, the questions come up on that.
Didn't they, they Felton Field Commission came to our finance committee. We discussed quite a bit of them. In fact, I think I might go to one there, they've got a meeting coming up.
Yeah, tomorrow night.
But they said that all the stumps had been removed.
I looked down the street, they did.
They said, have you noticed all the stumps have been removed?
So that happened in the last week?
They cut all the trees already? Last time I was down there, cause I didn't get to, get to the car show.
The trees were gone at the car show, but the stumps are still there at the car show, so they're going this week.
Have done it, and I'm wondering.
Oh, it was the, it was the fence, uh, the fence repair, or the, the fence installation was the phase two that they were looking for the funding for.
Where's that gonna be, along the road?
Along the road where the trees were.
Have they spent the fifteen thousand that they said they had to support this?
The fifteen thousand is going toward the tree and stump removal.
But I.
And last year's nine thousand we gave them was for the fence or vice versa? It was something like that. They had fifteen, we had nine or something like that. We had a total of like twenty-four thousand that was gonna accomplish this.
I don't remember nine.
That was ten or something, but.
But I asked.
Well, yeah, I don't recall a specific number, but we weren't giving, it wasn't a dollar per dollar for match and I thought they said they had like fifteen thousand.
My concern and issue was that the riding and driving club, which is a primary users with the, the Felton Field Commission runs the whole field. The Little League takes care of itself. They fundraise, they maintain the fields, they mow the fields, they take care of their portion, you know, so the rec fields are, are done without using funds from, from the finance committee. Then the riding and driving club, they're the primary user for the, for the arenas and the rings and, and the snack shed because they have, um. Probably a dozen events a year where they have horses come out and you'll see sometimes forty trailers there this day overnight. They do five, ten mile trail rides through the woods. Um, they have competitions in the arenas, you know, different types of riding events, the arenas for all ages, and they charge fees for this. And I was on the riding and driving club years ago, they make quite a bit of money and they give thousands in scholarships and they, and they, they, they command a lot of money for the things they wanna do. And my feeling is if, if they want money towards the arenas or towards the things specifically the riding and driving club uses, they can fund those themselves. But the property itself, especially with, as I said before, four H is coming in and they're gonna invest. I wanna invest for things like that, so if we wanna put a fence back up, you, you need that. If they're gonna have at some point, you know, even the car show, you have fees for access to people for admission, you need a way to control that, so. There's nothing wrong with something back, as long as that's what it's for and I don't, I haven't talked to them to know what it's for. And that's what I asked.
I just said I wasn't prepared with.
Don't know what the funds are for to look into.
I got you.
I asked for the background because it's always been kind of vague.
And I do have those, those numbers. I do have a full report, I just.
And you've got the deeds of the land being given copies. Because the town owns Felton Field.
Right.
Now, I was always under the impression that the Felton Field Commission owns the field.
I was due to start.
I wasn't.
The town owns it, it's under the care and custody of the Felton Field Commission.
That's how I've understood it, but that's just.
Well, I understand that now, but it's odd that they have that, but we still have a parks division dealing with all of our other parks.
Yeah.
So that's why I thought it was private at the time because.
Yeah, I thought.
They have the same history in town as some others.
But they, um, they charge for, I asked if they charged for using the field.
Yes.
Two hundred dollars for an event. Now that car show.
That's a lot cheap for, for a square foot in town hall.
Yeah. I said I think they need to relook at their fees for that car show. I heard he was getting ten dollars a head to go in there and the vendors that are in there pay him a certain fee also.
Right, I know the association, the fire association, we're fortunate because we initially done that with them, I think. Some of them, so we don't pay a fee luckily, but we, we paid to rent the shed from the riding driving club. Um, but I understood the vendors were paying, other vendors were paying more than our rental fee to, to be there, but I don't know what the number was.
Well, the vendors' fees were going to the event.
Right, to Greg, yeah.
Well, all of it goes to Greg and then he's gotta redistribute to cover his costs. Well, not everything is.
Well, he wants, you gotta let him make money off it.
I'm sure he's paying for the entertainment. He's paying for, not everybody that shows up is paying him to be there. He's gotta pay other people to help bring people there.
But I think two hundred dollars is a very low fee.
I don't disagree with that, especially if you're considering the entire site is two hundred dollars. There are times you can rent out the, the white building. Or the Little League field.
Well.
You know, or all in the same day, they can be different groups broken out and that's a Felton Field Commission thing that we just gotta.
Once again, it's their commission, it's their control. And if that's what they choose, we can advise them that they might do better in their funding if they get more for it, but it's.
They want us to fund them.
Then you can make requests.
Same thing like the library.
Yes.
And that's why I started asking a lot of questions. And that field was donated to the town. As parks and recreation. Wasn't just for horse. And I know the baseball fields.
It's actually one of the best parks we have in town to include the basketball courts.
The extra field that they, the practice field. Their horse trailers and the horses tear it all up.
I'm surprised they go that far back. They did.
Is it bylaw that sets up the Felton Field Commission?
And that's what they, the baseball people are complaining about, the Felton saying, well, we need it for the horses. But if it's a parks and recreation for the town of Barry, it's gotta be used for all.
Maybe we should review the documents, um, with the gift to make sure we're not violating the spirit of the gift. And that, that commission needs to.
Saw them, I asked them for them.
The, the commission would need to, you know, make proper efforts to be held to that.
Right, and part of that is that it was, it's a twenty thousand dollar, um. Fund that was established that they basically are living off, it's an endowment that they're living off the interest from to maintain that, so.
But they do receive donations, quite a few donations that they.
The endowment's at twenty-seven thousand right now.
Because the four H had done, they estimated about ten thousand dollars for the work there. Because that was, I asked if four H is having a fair there, are they being charged for their event? Well, they didn't charge them this year because they had put in this money.
Right, my understanding is that's going to be more of a partnership, that, because they intend to contribute and possibly erect buildings there as well. So, charging a fee, it's more, I, you know what I mean, more of a partnership where they're going to help improve the site, and they're going to bring, hopefully, events that our, our town folk can enjoy, especially the youth, which I was excited about that. So I, I wouldn't want to see a fee go to four, to four H.
But if they're bringing.
Are their meetings usually later at night?
Like the four H into town and these kind of things? They need to use it, like townspeople use it too.
Okay, I would like to take this, appreciate your input, get back to the warrant, and maybe we can put Felton Field on the agenda the next meeting, so we can get more into these and follow up.
What the money's for.
So what is the thing on the warrant for Felton Field?
Article twenty-two, field improvements, it says.
The description is a generic Felton Field improvements.
Well, we told them we probably could not give them any money this year.
Okay.
But we would look into it, and they suggested that attend a meeting, which I noticed there was one coming up.
When do you need, this, what's the date for the publisher of this?
Well, I have it on the, on the schedule for the twentieth, but we have all of it in seven, you don't need to sign it till, or for seven days prior to a meeting, so.
Now, the constables have to post it, what, seven days prior to the meeting?
Seven days prior, so if it's, if, if there's any reason why you don't sign it.
So we technically have to June third to meet as a board to actually finalize it if we wanted to.
What date is our public hearing on it?
The public hearing is the sixth.
Well, hopefully by the twentieth, we're all set.
Before that.
I would, so we'll go through this now, but on the twentieth, hopefully we'll have more understanding of numbers, and we can determine whether we want to scratch something and move.
A little clarity in some ways.
Say, the biggest unknown with everything right now is where the school budget's going to land, and that's all going to be predicated on what happens with the Senate's budget.
Yep.
Say it were.
Article twenty.
When I saw an article that said the state's a billion dollars above their estimated receipts, so.
That's marijuana.
Yeah.
They're taxing the heck out of it. Yes, but the bad news is they're all getting pay raises in Congress.
Don't have enough money because. Article twenty-three, Ruggles Lane PA system and telephone replacement, this has been on these schools' capital request plan for at least two, maybe three years. I know in discussions with Andrew, this is something I would support depending on how the actual school budget fall goes through. In relation to also how the other towns are approaching the assessments that have been recommended by the school committee. Again, we have some other towns that are asking us to say, you know what, you're still asking too much, and I kind of agree with that. But if we can get down to that level, and I don't recall the exact numbers we're talking here, it sounded like we could put this back in for us. Because I think it's worth it to do that, I think the money overall isn't the bigger issue for us, but I think our neighboring towns can use the support. And I think helping our neighbors, and then we can reinvest in the elementary school as a benefit to us, that's my general thought.
Yeah, because the other big thing was the, was repaving the parking lot, too, so.
And this fixing the sidewalk up front, as I recall from.
Yeah, that was all, that was all part of that.
As we mentioned earlier, net school, minimum net school funding, we are several million dollars over our minimum net school funding requirement. My opinion has been pretty clear and strong since I've been on this board, that I would like to see their budget not only reduce in their increases, but go to a zero, and zero net increase, and possibly bring it back a little bit. We are well above net school funding minimums, we have continually, if you look back historically over the last ten years, given them, except for the last year really, virtually everything they've asked for. And we've watched our, our standing in the state education-wise decline over that decade continuously. So we keep reinvesting and giving them everything they ask for, and, and the performance doesn't seem to show for, for what our students are getting. And pouring more money at it because they ask for it isn't going to fix, um, our education. Until I see our standings in the state rise for the education, where we stand percentage-wise, percentile in the state, I don't want to continue to fund them in increases in their budget. I'd like them to, to learn to spend their money wisely and make the education work, giving them more money is not improving our education. And frankly, that's the, the only thing in this issue I really care about, is our education increasing. When I moved to this town, we were something around the top thirty percentile, so were the state, and we're now in the bottom thirty. And, uh, it's, it's frustrating, it's frustrating, as the, their numbers go up, their percentage of the budget go up. And I have advocated to Andrew, and I said it to this board, and I said it last year when the school was seated, the budget, I said, that's a great start. I'd like to see it go down next year, maybe a zero increase, and I, I'm serious about that. And Hubbardson's recommendation, I think, was a one point four percent, and I'd be happy with that, if we could get it that low this year, that's a, a, a lesser increase of the budget than before, and far less than they've asked. And I think that would make a tremendous difference in our budget this year as well. That net change would be a couple hundred thousand dollars in the town, if we kept the budget down to that level of increase. And I would be surprised if the other towns wouldn't want to support it, and this goes back to our select boards trying to have a committee, include finance committee, and discuss these issues. I think the, the school committee's job is supposed to be represent our towns with the school's budget, and I feel like our school committee has not listened to our towns' interests. Although last time they came back with a lower recommendation, they still don't seem to understand how significant an impact they have on every aspect of our budget with their numbers. And how something as small as another two percent change in their budget, um, will make funding a lot of these other car articles very simple. It's, it's that big a difference. So I, I was hoping to ask for a zero increase, and I don't think we'll get there in one year, but I would support Hubbardson's one point four percent. I don't, I assume you guys all got the same email I did from them.
Yeah, I saw Hubbardson's.
I would like us to discuss that, maybe agree with that number, and let Andrew forward that to the other town administrators, so the towns can present a unified opinion on this. The selectmen anyways, and, um, the sooner we do it, the more they have time to look at it before a town meeting, which is fair to them. I don't want to surprise them on meeting floor with this.
Did you have a chance, Dylan, to read the email from Hubbardson regarding the school budget?
Haven't gotten to get to that one yet.
Okay. I'm generally in agreement with Greg on this, um, but. Yeah, again, I don't have it right in front of me, there's, it's about specifics.
They were pretty specific.
It was basically that they were.
Yeah, I mean, they had specific numbers, and you followed up with.
It was five, they, they basically voted that the school, in their budget, that the school should get a five percent increase on, on their assessment.
Yeah.
What I followed up with was what a five percent increase in Hubbardson's assessment would translate out to, to the other towns using this, using the formula.
Yeah.
Which then was, I think, what.
Three forty-six.
What's that?
One point four percent increase and a three hundred and forty-six thousand dollar reduction in their request from us.
From, from the initial.
From their initial request.
Right.
Unless I'm recalling my numbers incorrectly, which.
I think it was more, I think, I, I remember their overall, I think that was actually a reduction of almost six hundred thousand dollars from their.
You got the budget, and our portion was.
Our portions.
Our forty percent portion of that was six hundred, but it, it was going to reduce our portion of about three hundred and forty thousand and change. By giving them, allowing them a one point four percent increase, which a lot of our town departments are getting similar to that in that ballpark. And I think that's reasonable, I would like to, as I said last year, I'd like to see them have a similar increase as our other town budgets, not, they get eight percent, and everyone else has to go up even lower a percent. If, if our total revenues go up by a certain percentage, I'd like to see the, the towns all grow by that percentage of budgets, not one jump ahead and everyone else get a small proportion. Because over the years, the last ten years, um, many departments have cut, cut quite strongly, and, and continued to cut as the school continued to grow. So as other towns received it by ten, fifteen percent in some years, they, they cut their budget ten or fifteen percent, the school grew by eight percent, ten percent. And, you know, if the school was asked to receive their budget by fifteen percent a year, they would, they would, you know, be very opposed to it. But other departments in this town had done this for a decade, and, um, it was frustrating to watch it, and I, I think a one point four increase is a very reasonable request, and I feel strongly on it.
So, maybe this week we'll find out if we throw that on to the next week's impromptu agenda.
I'd like to get an answer, actually, to the.
That'll give Dylan a chance to try to think about a little bit more, and then get back, so we can actually have more of a. I, I just mean, I don't feel comfortable saying, let's vote to send something to the other towns, because.
Let him read it, too, and, but that, at least in two weeks from now, that'll give us a chance to get it out there, so the school committee has some warning it's coming. Because they're going to need to sit down and have a serious look, like, how would you like it clarified, he said, oh, we're just going to take a couple hundred thousand of the town's budget, rework all your numbers. They've got a whole budget to go through as well, and they've got to figure out where those cuts are going to happen. It's, it's of their whole overall budget, I mean, they're, I know, thirty-five and a half, thirty-six million dollar budget request this year. Um, so six hundred thousand dollars in total is a fortieth, it's, you know, two percent of their budget, something like that total. It's, it's not huge, but, um, it's got a very large impact on our budget.
Okay.
But I want them to have time.
Yes, Sam.
It would also be nice, considering the, uh, increases in taxes year after year after year for the town of Barry, it would be really nice to be able to lower the taxes, and maybe there'll be some.
We did last year.
There'll be some.
Your tax rate went down last year.
The rate went, wait a minute, wait a minute.
The value actually went up.
Well, then be more clear about what you mean by your taxes going down.
We're talking about taxes.
It'll never go down.
Don't say that, because there was a house sold in, in Barry.
When was the last time you can tell me that one fiscal year, total amount paid out of your pocket to pay the tax bill? So in other words, don't play tax rate, don't play assessment, the money you paid the town in one year.
That you have done.
No, 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 that's what's been going on forever.
You just did that.
Sam, when was the last time you went from one year, and the next year you paid the town less?
I don't know what.
Trying to use the, use the standing of it affected his zone, which it.
They were redefining the zone, is what they.
Right, but that was also prior to a special, that was about three weeks prior to a special town meeting. So we were at a, we were, it was a much more compressed timeline, so I think that we're.
And here's the other issue, though, of these citizens petitions. One, two, three of them. Are citizens petitioned by a member of the planning board who cannot present himself before the planning board? And therefore, I think it's invalid to even hold a public hearing, because he cannot present his own citizen's petition before the board he's on.
Can he ever present?
Just like a board of selectmen cannot come here on his own and present to you, I don't believe he's allowed to do that.
Can he have a presenter?
Because he's on the board, you would work with the board to develop it, you would not create a separate bylaw and request the board to present it on your behalf.
Can the petitioner have a presenter on his behalf, first question?
I would just like to double check because of that conflict of interest concern.
And my, oh, my, I stand behind my belief that we need to reread this process, because my takeaway from this last time was, the ten signatures doesn't force it to the warrant. And to a zoning bylaw change, all the ten signatures can do is force us to begin the process. I believe it doesn't hit the warrant unless we agree to place it a little, because it's our warrant, and that comes after we get the recommendation from the, the planning board, so my belief was.
I think it has nothing to do with that, all it does is require a public hearing, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if the public, if the planning board says, we don't like it. We still have to put it on the warrant.
Let me be more.
It's just a public hearing process to make sure that people get to hear about it before they vote on it.
I believe.
All boards can set up a town meeting and say that it's, that they don't.
I believe that in the specific, specific circumstance of a zoning bylaw, that no citizen has the right to force it on the warrant, period. They have the right to force the process, which makes us review it, and the planning board review it, us to wait to hear from the planning board, then make our decision to put it on the board. And that's why we need to reread those hearings, that's what I asked, to bring those definitions here publicly, so we can deliberate on them, because I believe there's interpretation within these. And I thought that our takeaway last time was that they have absolutely no right to force any zoning bylaw that affects the entire town. They can do it for their property, as ones do further, their individual property, rezone their property, reconsider their property. But no one has a right to force a zoning bylaw for the whole town onto the warrant with ten signatures, they, they can force the process. That, that was my take.
Can you read the top right corner of that, sir, to yourself or whatever, just, the individual supposedly was submitting it on behalf of the planning board?
Well, the, the only thing is whether or not that they were doing it on behalf of the planning board or not, they have more than ten.
No, that's, we received it as if it was done on behalf of, so the wording states, he presented something on behalf of the planning board, and I'm not sure it's accurate.
No, because if the planning board was going to present it, they'd just tell us we'd like this on the warrant. If that was the planning board's view, they'd just submit it to us.
Right, they.
They wouldn't go through this pro, they don't need ten signatures, they ask us to put it on the warrant.
Which, which just goes back to an audit trail means, can it even go on the warrant if it was received incorrectly?
I wouldn't see, I don't know if it was that it was really received incorrectly, because technically it's not even a planning board submission, it's a citizen's petition. So every person whose name is on that is technically the people who submitted that article, not necessarily that it was the planning board done by citizen's petition. They may have been proponent, but I think technically it's the individuals listed.
So this is just saying, we counted the signatures?
Yeah.
That's all this cover sheet's saying?
Right.
And so it was a town employee that was just making reference to how we received it?
Right, and I think that.
And based on their judgment, in other words, it wasn't submitted by the individual saying, I'm doing this for this reason, okay?
And once again, that. The signatures need to be, or should be clarified by the town clerk, because they're not handed out like a, a mini, you know, the petitions go out issued by the town clerk on formal documents. So people are signing an actual, and we don't know if these signatures were generated, and then the document was written after the fact, and we, we don't know that.
Well, I mean, that's her certification, right, on the front, that the.
That's the certification saying that they've received and counted all the signatures.
And I always get frustrated with these petitions, because we have no way of knowing what they formed out for signatures, really, because they're not on a notarized document with this town seal.
Honestly, my bigger frustration is I have no way of counting this signature and saying that this letter was presented for the signature sheet, because it's not on the same page.
That, that's what I'm talking about.
But, our town clerk said the process was followed, and it doesn't matter our interpretation, because legally, that's.
No, that's what I'm saying, my frustration, we discussed that before, and she said there is no sheet she hands out, she just verifies the signatures of those residents in town, that's all she verifies. She's verifying the signatures are authentic from people registered to vote, that's all she's verifying. Whereas something else like a recall process, she produces the signatory sheets affixed to the statement up front, as one document that they're all signed. And that's, you know, the process for this is very lax. But my interpretation of what had to be placed in the warrant for zoning bylaw, I thought specifically, um, in the instance of a zoning bylaw, somebody had the right to get ten signatures and enforce the process, not to force the bylaw on, on the warrant.
The first step in the process is.
And we could verify that with the state.
Right, the first step in the process to, is to refer it to the planning board for their representation.
Right, and we have a time for him to do that, and.
We have fourteen days for receipt.
We have fourteen days, so I'd like to wait before we send that, we can, to our next meeting.
No, no.
I'd like to verify this with the state that this process is being done right. Is it fourteen days from receipt or fourteen days from when we deliberate it?
Fourteen days from receipt.
Okay, so fourteen days, if we have maybe.
Which then gives. Which then gives...
I'm just saying...
They've already posted the public hearing.
I'd like to do our diligence.
Planning board already did.
I'd like to do our diligence before it's handed to them.
No, there's, also for the individual zoning changes, they, they've got a list of like five different bylaws they're doing in that public hearing now. The Higgins requesting to change some of their business to residential or vice versa, I forget, and RJ McDonald's got something out there now like that.
You see my point, this, this state would probably have an opinion on this as to what the proper process is with the zoning bylaw.
The zoning act right here. The board of selectmen or city councils shall, within fourteen days of receipt of such zoning ordinance or, or bylaw submitted to the planning board for review.
And then what? There's a whole process this defined that we went through before, and it left me with the impression that we did not have to place it on the warrant.
The planning board has twenty-one days to hold a public hearing and so many months to provide a report.
Right, but with, with that one, the one that, that was brought forward before, that wasn't even done through citizen's petition, they didn't have the minimum, or they didn't have the required signatures for it, it was, it was a specific landowner just petitioning to ask that if the bylaw be changed, not a specific zoning, or not the zoning of his parcel.
Right, he was asking to, he was asking under the guise that since it affected his property, he was exempt from required to have the hundred signatures because it, it was about his property. But it wasn't actually about his property, it affected his property because it, it was about the entire zone, he wanted to redefine the allowances in his own.
Right, which under the, which under the special town meeting required a hundred signatures.
Right, and he was trying to be exempt from that because it affected his property. Whereas the Higgins' request is specific about redefining their parcel, that doesn't need signatures.
Like the same one they did at Loring Drive a couple of years ago.
So the, the, in the Higgins' case, if they wanted to wait to special town meeting, they don't need any signatures to put this on the warrant because it's asking to rezone their parcel only. That's allowed to be placed on at their request. But to, to affect the, the zoning bylaw itself, it was a different process in my, once again, my interpretation was all they could do is force it into the process, not force it on the warrant.
Do the individuals that are looking for their own still need the recommendation of planning board, like the Higgins and the RJ McDonald?
All, all zoning requirements require that a, a hearing be held and that a recommended, recommendation of the planning board be given.
I would like to make a recommend, a, a motion that articles twenty-eight through...
Twenty-seven, right? No, no, yeah, twenty-seven's the actual...
Thirty-four. All be referred to the planning board for the review and public hearing process required by Mass General Law.
Second that motion.
Further discussion?
Just a bureaucratic question. Can a member of the public see those article proposed, articles at this point?
Maybe.
Yes. They're, they're all authenticating their public documents.
No, I mean, do we actually have full drafts of everything, of all of these?
Right there, right in front of you.
Okay.
They're all right there.
Oh, yeah, the ones that have signature, you can, because they actually can't change them. There's no changing of whatever they submitted under signature.
Request copy.
Yep.
Andrew, is that what you emailed me for the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Is exactly that?
Yep, it's all, all of the signatures, all the proposals. I, I...
That whole bundle?
Yep.
Okay.
I didn't see those.
Came in later this afternoon, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You were probably driving at the time it showed up.
Yeah, I, I, I went, I stayed home and went through stuff as of this morning to make sure I was caught up in everything. And so anything that comes, I said before, anything that comes in after like eight o'clock, nine o'clock, forget about it, I'm not, I'm working here.
I was rushing to try to get the, the warrant together.
Yeah, and even still, even still, if it's that much in the morning, I don't have time to review it, I can't, I can't put off work that much and review that amount of detail.
Article thirty-five is our semi-annual request to change chapter eighty dash four of the general bylaws regarding playing ball in streets, parks, and other places. This time, the request is to change it to ball-playing, throwing stones...
Or other missile.
Being, no person shall play balls or throw stones or other missile-like objects in or upon any public street end.
Did she make her ten signatures on time?
They're right there.
Then it's going on.
Verified as of April twenty-fourth, certified on April twenty-fourth.
Now, the difference here is this is to affect the code, not a bylaw, a zoning bylaw, so this would be placed on.
Right, this is just a general bylaw, so...
This is placed on.
It's there. Article thirty-six, citizens petition resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. You can look into it, but it has a little bit to do with the Native Americans, and the symbol on the state flag actually shows, let me see if I can hit it a little quicker when I read through this. Okay, Mylls Standish owned broadsword reflected on the state flag. He's kind of brandished above the head of a Native man, whereas the history relations between Massachusetts and Native nations who continue to live within the borders includes the force and terminative natives on Deer Island where they died by the hundreds. The general concept of this is we weren't very nice to the Indians when we first showed up, and we have a flag that looks like we're still trying to dominate them. So somebody's made a petition to change it.
Why are we doing this at a town meeting?
It's statewide. If you read into it and you look at the, uh, submittal, there's, it's a statewide push, various individuals at each locale are trying to push it to get it on the ballot, so then it kind of pushes it up to the state. It's kind of the same way that marijuana got legalized, it started usually at the local level and got pushed up. I think it was marijuana that went through that process. Something went through, a local, medical marijuana maybe was the local, uh...
My opinion is people are trying to hide from history, and it's just, it's...
It's history, yeah.
If you forget about history, you're doomed to, to repeat it. I think these things should stay, and I, I don't like it. They're pulling down statues and doing...
Sometimes it's better to keep the symbol and then point it out and explain it. Now, we went through all the articles. Sam, you have your thought, school.
Thank you. I wonder, I remember what Craig was saying, Greg O'Sullivan was saying some time ago, that there should be a way at every article to show the public how this particular article will affect the tax rate of the cost to the citizens, to give citizens an idea of whether they can afford all these expenses, that's number one. And you mentioned that, I remember in a previous meeting, maybe last year, but I remember those discussions to that effect. Number two is that as long as I've been coming, as long as I've lived in this town, the, the school budget has been, no matter how large it is, has been three lines or few lines. When our departments come forward and ask for money, there's line items. And I would think that we, as, as the town, should expect the school to come through with at least an eight and a half by eleven piece of paper if they're gonna be asking for three million dollars and show us where the money's going.
I would like to say something about that real quick. No, 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 it's a quick one, not a big story.
No, no, but I want to finish.
Okay.
Now, I remember specifically...
Six million, by the way.
Whatever the money, whatever the dollars is, I remember specifically, there was a discussion about the Public Works Department getting a regular truck with a regular steel, steel body, a stainless steel body, and there was discussions about the money. We gave Jason such a runaround for this little money, and conversely, when the school came in, we were dumbfounded, we didn't know what to do, we just passed it. Now, so I guess what I'm asking for is ask them for a full eight and a half by eleven page, and so we can understand what they're spending their money on, and we can inquire. And their warrant should not be in the middle of, of our assortment of warrants, because what happens is when they get their money, they walk out and they couldn't give a damn about this town. And I'm sure that you are going to concur with me, that you've been in town a long time, and you know what happens, and, and I think, I think it's disrespectful, especially we give them a ton of money, then they walk away because they get what they want. I think we should, we should expect respect, whether we give people little money or big money, we should expect respect from the educators. That's all I have to say, thank you. And then you can respond, however you, you guys can respond.
That's cool, and it was on topic that I wanted to respond. What I wanted to say is I have actually been talking to other town selectmen, and one of the things that is potentially coming out of the new Braintree request for all five towns having quarterly meetings, maybe semi-annual meetings, something to that effect, was just so that the board of selectmen can also play a greater role regionally in this school district, looking at how the school committee deals with their budget. Because for any one town that truly has a grievance about how the budget's presented, an individual town cannot get the school or the school committee to make a change. It takes all town board of selectmen to come together and say, we need to rewrite the agreement that mandates that the school committee and the school will present a budget in such a manner. And so discussions have started with that because we realize it's very opaque, it's not a transparent, this is how we plan to spend our money. And so, nor is it broken down to say, we're gonna even just say, we're gonna put seventy percent into this, uh, twenty percent, you know, we don't even have it broken down, it's just, here's your blank check, go spend it. It's a lump sum. We can't even say fifty-five percent of it's for later labor, you know, thirty percent's for utilities, and the rest is for materials and equipment, you know? It's not even that simply broke down, it's a flat line, you go back and all they have to answer to is the school committee, who can change their mind every week they want about where they want to spend that money. You can approve a budget, and they can go back and then completely rewrite the budget, because all you're giving them is a flat top dollar fee. We have no requirement in our agreement with the Quabbin Regional School District to have a greater breakdown for towns to vote on, so that you can actually put them in certain lanes of this is where you can spend your money. To do that, it requires all the towns to come together and go to the Quabbin Regional School District and say, we need to sit down and discuss our agreements. So that's the answer why we get one line item, they show up, it gets voted on, and they walk away. They're not required to be accountable, so they do not offer you something that would hold them accountable. They could do it without us making them do it, but they won't.
So what are the five towns doing to make them be more accountable? Because this is...
We're starting to talk, which apparently we hadn't been doing for years.
Beginning discussions, that the fact is, the school has no control over the regional agreement, that's within the select boards. If these select boards decide to rewrite that agreement, it will be rewritten.
I don't know, the school committee may have a voice, I gotta read it more.
I don't think so, I think it's gotta go to the town meeting and get certain, certain percentage of vote, but I, I'm pretty sure that the select boards want to rewrite it and demand different things from our school district, we can establish that, and then once again, that's run by the school committee, but we do set the guidelines for how they operate, and those guidelines have been fixed for years, for decades, and they need to be evaluated to see how we can rewrite it. You can't do too big a change, I mean, I don't want to look at all their line items like we do for town. They've got to triple our budget plus, it's gonna be probably not exorbitantly more lines, but significantly more lines. Yeah, and, and I think they all would do that when they hand it to you on purpose to make it confusing, because the reality is that they have employees like the town does, they have buildings like the town does, they have utilities like we do, they have paper supplies and other things. So to make it more cumbersome, I'm sure they break down paper clips and pencils and erasers and, and make it way more than it has to be. But they could certainly get a definition working off our own town budget, we want certain categories, and, and allow them a certain amount of school supplies in general, utilities, teachers' salaries, professional salaries for people they bring in for something, administrative salaries, and, and we could get line items like that, and we should, but we're gonna have to discuss what kind of items we want so we don't get that book, because we don't want that book.
Exactly, so...
It's impossible to go through in...
Is that enough for now, and we can push it to another agenda item for another meeting? But I mean, did that help the discussion?
As long as we're working towards this...
We are, we are, we are. And I'm not just trying to cut you off.
And, and we're also working towards the Seven Hills organization because Charlie championed that when, when he was here.
Yes, he did.
Now we have nobody to champion that.
No?
Right.
We have nobody, huh?
No, wait a moment, I was saying that Charlie focused, because of his experiences with the state, on championing the, the issue with Seven Hills. And now we don't have anybody because of their experience. Dylan doesn't have experience with that, you have some experience, you have some experience, but there's no specific person. So what I'm saying is that we can't allow that difficulty that's costing us money, significant money, to be forgotten. So I don't know how the select board is going to handle this, but I thought it was critical for me to bring up.
I will, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take a quick thing on my quote-unquote selectmen's report, because it's about this.
Sure.
I was interviewed by Fox Twenty-Five News on Monday specifically about Seven Hills and DCF and the issues. May fourteenth, they will be airing this interview with multiple other people they interviewed, and I believe it actually includes a couple other towns that are having similar issues with facilities that are regulated or contracted by DCF. That's all I'm saying, watch the interview, figure it out. But we haven't stopped, we're still working it, there's a variety of things going on.
Thank you.
Let's move on and do these, all these quick ones. Wage authorization, Jared Markowski.
Okay, well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Tom, yes. Thank you, Sam. You can stick around if you want, but these are, uh...
And Andrew? Keep up the good work.
Right.
Do I have a motion?
I see fire too far, yes, while I'm staying.
Do you wanna make that motion? Do you comfortable with it? You have questions?
This is...
I, uh, move to accept this.
All right. Second the motion, further discussion, call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Clarification, it was Jared Markowski, uh, being hired as an on-call firefighter at fifteen sixty-six an hour. Is this the guy that came from another town? I was, at the, uh, award ceremony, is this the guy?
This is the new DPW guy.
The guy was, that was, um...
This isn't the DPW position, though.
No, he currently works at DPW and now he's...
Okay.
That's not the new guy you met at the meeting, no.
No, he had presented someone that had come on board that he was like...
From a different town, some older guys, close to my age.
Okay, thank you. You know what I'm talking about.
I do, it wasn't him, not him.
Okay. He's done. Anything else here that... Okay, license renewal for Camp Colebrook alcohol license. This is an on-premises license. All of the taxes paid up to date?
Yes, that's why I got held in additional meeting, we have to make...
Water bills, so...
Water bill, more importantly.
Yes, yes. That was the specific one that was being held.
That's, that's what it always is.
I was gonna say, if I recall, they would never pay the bill until it was time to renew the license, and then it's... until it was time to renew the license and then it's like, oh.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license for Colebrook RV Resort LLC.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, 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 aye. Labor Council is requesting to extend the Labor Council contract by, but also increase it by $100 a year because...
$100 a month.
A month. I'm sorry, $100 a month because of the potential with the fire department that now has four members that have unionized because they're full-time positions.
Three members.
Three members?
Yeah.
Considering, I, from my position, I think we're getting fairly reasonable or even to our benefit. You're never going to get a better price than this for Labor Council retainer for the costs. I think we're, this puts us at about 600 a month?
Yes. 750. No, I'm sorry.
750? Oh, went from 650 to 750?
But my, my thought is this...
I misread it.
Do we, do we use them three hours every month?
Do we use, well, especially during...
Not on average, three hours every month. If we, once we use them beyond that, we're going to pay 250 an hour anyways, so...
Have we ever been charged?
Have we been charged more?
Never, never gone beyond it.
No.
All right. That's fine then.
Yeah, and that's... Some with you, you're right. But he hasn't appeared to nickel and dime us.
If we've never been charged more, that means he's averaging out his times on it because clearly there's some months we've gone well beyond three hours a time.
Yeah, I was going to say, with all the police union negotiation stuff, we never received any...
I was just curious if we're paying the extra anyways. I don't know why bother. But if he's not charged, that's why. That's, I make a motion to accept this, the new contract for the $100 a month increase.
I'll get that.
Any further discussion, questions? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye. And I think right now, he also is a, falls under the separate line item of General Counsel, so it's not the, it's not Jim Barrett's line item. It's the other one where we just pay for all other legal services out of.
We just bumped the column 1,200 bucks on you.
Oh, actually, no. We already have surplus in there.
All right.
We just got to bite the bullet and not use another third-party lawyer for other reasons if we can help it. We'll leave that up to randomness. Um, what do we got here? Can you, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to jump to the last item. Discussion on animals in public buildings. Where did this come from? What's the discussion? I'm okay with it being here. I just didn't know where it came from.
That's me. I've, I've had a lot of complaints from probably six or seven different people over the last couple of years, and several complaints from each, specifically about the dog that's in the building inspector's office in a little cage area. They've complained that it's, you know, has accidents in there sometimes and people that are allergic to dogs don't like it being in the building. And I got to agree. I don't, I don't know any of the towns that I've gone to that there's dogs in public buildings on a regular basis. It's not a service dog. It's not a licensed or registered vetted dog and it shouldn't be in our town building. I think it's, it's, I think it's unprofessional. I think it makes our town look like a little hick town. We have a dog yipping in a public building inside a gate. It just, I don't think it belongs there. And I've tried asking, you know, Andrew for you to look into it and what he might do and, but there's nothing he can do legally because we've made no...
No policy that...
No policy on it. And just as, before, they made the policy of no animals in town cars. And that's just specific because they didn't want the fire chief having his dog go in and play some fire calls. That was very specific because it only affected one person in town. But this is a general policy. It's, it's not like everyone rode in a fire chief car and was offended by a dog being there. But there are people that are offended by the dog being in the building. There are people that have legitimate allergies to dog and that, that's just the people that work in town that have complained about it. Who knows how many people in the public community that have an issue or have an allergy issue because there's, there's dogs in here. I think we should make a policy that we don't have, you know, any animals in our public buildings unless the service dogs are required to be here. That's why I asked to put it on here so we can discuss it as a board. It's, in my opinion, it's just my opinion and it represents, you know, thoughts of other people in town and more specifically in this case, people that work within the town that have dealings in the building. But I think in general, it's, it's, you know, I've talked to other people outside of town and get their opinion. They've never heard of dogs being allowed in their offices. And most people, you know, half the people would love it to have their puppy work and other people say, "Oh, I'm allergic to dogs. I wouldn't want to be near them." I'm allergic to cats, not dogs, but cats would, I'd be, it'd be, if there was a cat in this building on a regular basis, I'd be having an issue with every time I walk in here and that shouldn't be in a public building.
Yeah. Does fall under Finance Administration? Is it the administration side of Rules and Rights?
Yep.
Opinions generally?
No, I, I'll be honest. I generally agree with you. One, the general maintenance of the facility. Depends on how often, whatever's going on on that floor. Two, certain level of just paying attention to the distraction of the time lost spending time with the pet versus doing your job. It's hard to manage. It's hard to verify. Not questioning the individual. I'm saying you can't prove it because most everybody else is working and not paying attention if the other person is working or playing. My experience, the person works. They put in their time. They make it. I'm not questioning that because I never hear enough to be able to speak to that. But I do know that any animal I've had to bring somewhere takes away my focus from what else I'm doing. So I don't think it's a positive work environment to have that. And I agree. You never know who's allergic. You never know. And we serve the public, so we have to plan for, we're going to come across someone that's allergic. We're going to come across someone that has fear of dogs. We're going to come across anything like that where it's, it's, I don't believe it's the right thing to be bringing your dogs into a municipal work environment that's an administrative building. Kind of like Greg said, outside of properly certified service dogs, other things like that. I think maybe there's a certain way to do it, but even then, just because you can bring it in, we probably need to look at certain levels of, okay, it's in, and now what do you do with it? How do you keep the area clean? How do you make sure that you're not spreading? What are we doing to address that? Because it becomes a complex mess. And if at all possible, I'd rather avoid the complex mess because I know when I first started, there were issues between personnel and animals can become an issue between working personnel. And so, in general, I just don't see a lot of positive to saying, "Yeah, go ahead and bring your dogs in." And I can't see how you can say, "Let one in," and then now get stuck arbitrarily deciding when one dog versus another dog is appropriate.
And conversely, the policy of not allowing dogs in town vehicles. I would like to reverse that policy. I think that if we are considering a police dog, we're going to get to some point that we have to make exceptions and modify it anyways. And quite frankly, if Brianna decided she wanted to bring her dog around when she does inspections, I don't care. It's in her, it's in her car with her.
I do. It's the same thing as the carpet up there. You bring your dog in, now you got, now we got maintenance of the vehicle we've got to deal with. And if it's a town vehicle now, if someone's using their personal vehicle, I'm not going to say just because it's work.
Right. And, you know, the other thing is if they're bringing it to job sites or something, it might not be appropriate. So, all right, that's, but the policy in general for, we just have to make a provision if and when we get to a police dog, we have to make sure we make a provision to allow for that because that's stupid little thing that's going to come back and bite us in the butt if it's not allowed for at least.
A police dog is not a dog. It's an employee now.
Yeah, for true.
It has an identity.
Aren't they a served, classified service dog?
They're a police officer.
They're a police officer, actually, yeah.
I mean, so in a way, I guess you could say, "That's not a dog. It's a police officer." But I agree. We should just make sure we have some language in however we want to develop this policy.
Search, rescue and, and, you know, service dogs of any nature.
What's your thoughts?
I mean, you all covered all the bases on that. I can't see why there would be a good reason to have a, any animal in a municipal vehicle or a building. Seems unprofessional, counterproductive.
And I would think we maybe put this into effect.
No, you're not on the board. I don't care what you think.
Really?
You. You can represent the general public. I am glad you can at least smile at me and know that that sarcasm is just, it's after 10. Okay. We need to start to draft up a paragraph or two to put into the policy about animals are not allowed at work.
In a timeframe of enforcement.
Unless we have the right legal reasons why we can't tell you not to.
It may be enforcing...
Outside of mass general law saying, "We have to let that dog in," that's the reason.
And I'd like to set enforcement of it as of July 1st next fiscal year because also obviously she's going to need to make arrangements and figure out what she's going to do, care for, and a kennel at home or someone else. She's going to have to come up with something. She needs some time to do that as well, but...
If you think, including in there some weird alternative like...
And a kennel?
We might listen? No, I'm not going to go there.
Still a dander and still...
I don't know what the alternative could be, but if someone could come up with something where they could sit there in front of the board and explain it, we can actually say, "That resolves all our concerns." I don't, I can't imagine it. But I don't want to say that they can't propose something that might actually answer that for me. So I'm okay if there's that. Except for appeal to the Board of Selectmen or whatever and then we can leave it that vague, like, well, I don't want it that vague. I want it to still say there's going to be a reason where you're addressing all our concerns.
Just wondering for, you know, like, if there was an emotion, emotional support animal, something like that.
It's got to have that third-party sanction, some, some certificate that proves it.
The state, the state...
Well, I'm just saying if, if there was some, you know, not talking like in terms of a...
We're saying registered service dog and the state defines those.
I hear you.
And partially that can define...
We want to be more stringent than the TSA, letting parrots on the airplane.
The TSA is getting more stringent on that as well.
So we got to look to see how stringent we're illegally allowed to be versus just being a policy. Because I don't know what those limits are on service dogs versus emotional support. I don't know what the rules are.
Well, I know that if you were talking about bringing them into a grocery store, you can't do it unless it's a service dog.
Fred would be better to be able to answer, huh?
Yeah.
Because it kind of overlaps on personnel rights.
Well, when it's health issues, restaurants and grocery stores and food service, you're not allowed to take some of that there as a service dog.
Taking this idea that we just talked about and running it by our Labor Council, Fred, because it does affect personnel rights, their rights as an employee. And we just need to make sure we're not infringing on those.
I know somebody that has one and she's a service dog.
Well, there's, there's different things. To be a registered service dog, they go and undergo quite a bit of training.
I would like to do this, if you don't mind.
Specifically licensed people. And service dogs, you get a certification online by filling out a paper.
Can we table the health and safety plan? I know it's pretty much, it is what it is. I'm sorry.
That's fine. You know, I was just really just looking at whatever sent you guys online. Send, send digital comments.
Deputy Chief, is that something we need to deal tonight?
No. I thought he was going to be here, but it's...
Okay, good. I would like to make a motion to close, adjourn the meeting.
Are we closing the warrant? Are we closing it tonight or different night? What day are we closing it?
We're going to come back in two weeks, the 20th.
I forget that I didn't...
And that'll be that final vote of please post these warrants.
I didn't recall the date we'd set to close, to close it.
What are those?
This is the meeting minutes that was approved.
He signs. That's us signing.
You sign, right?
It's a contract with the lawyer.
The contract and then the wage for, uh, do you have it?
Oh, that's me.
So the alcohol, we all sign and that's it, right? And you sign the others?
Actually, it might be just the alcohol you got to do.
I think it's just the alcohol we signed and you sign everything else and he signs the...
Twice. We'll get them all right. All right.
Greg. Recycling and solid...
These two posted notes have a signature page that you've got to sign. So you've got to sign twice in the package. And...
And up front.
I would do the front anyway, just in case. Since we voted on it, you guys are okay with me...
So we're supposed to sign the licensing...
Signing this contract, right? Because we actually voted, so...
Yes, because that's going back to the state to sell them that we didn't deny any.
Those are going to be the same?
Yes, they will.
A single copy?
Failure to renew and then deny.
Do you need another original copy?
Just checking on either pages or...
There it is. No, no, that's the one I signed. That's the one I didn't sign.
You saw the signature.
All right. That's about what I expected on that. It's 10:30. We're pretty close.
Still have no idea what Bruins score is.
Yeah, I don't need to sign it.
Yeah, I forgot.
I could, I could check it if I wasn't on it.
I saw, I got, I got one text from my brother-in-law in the city of Worcester. Woo-hoo, so I at least got one vote.
Is he a Bruins fan?
I'm a huge Bruins fan.
You have to ask because you get Tom George.
I'm at that level where everything I sign, like, I recommend and it goes to my boss who recommends, who goes to his boss to actually find.
Too many glitches. Like I said, I just want to...
So...
Will I just take the formal vote to close?
I find that the recommended? Yes. Call for vote?
Aye.
All right.
Close it up.
So anyway.